Good morning again, everybody, council and members of the public watching. I'll ask Mr. Tifo to rise and report, please.
Yes, good morning. County Council met in camera this morning for roughly 24 minutes and dealt with three items. One, it approved its in-camera minutes of its meeting of May 5, 2021. It heard an update from our laborations manager, Home Collective, arguing with the SEIU, and received a report on a matter concerning the camera property. Those are the matters I have to report.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is Dr. Renade standing by? Oh, see, I'm just yet. I'm sure, there he comes, he's logging on now.
He is.
Good morning, Dr. Renade.
Morning.
Whenever you're ready, we'd love to hear your report.
Okay, thank you, Warden.
Update, I guess.
Thanks, Warden. I'll just confirm that you can hear me.
Very good.
Okay, great. So, good morning, everyone. A very, I think, a short update today, but we'll just structure it the way that we usually do. So, in terms of cases, right, the trend is that we just get sort of a handful every day, and it's manageable and low, and the trend is consistently low. I think, you know, yesterday's report saw us with five additional cases, which would have been from the day before. Yesterday through the day, I think we got about six cases, right? So, again, low, grumbling, fairly steady, kind of like this, right? And that's as a result, largely speaking, of people not gathering social groups and all of those connections that we have being really dramatically kind of brought down in order to affect disease transmission rates, right? So, that's okay, that's not so bad. We don't have any current outbreaks that we're actively investigating or working on, and that's also, that's also good. In terms of the health system, you're seeing a decrease in the pressure in general across the province on ICUs and on beds and things like that. A little bit of additional pressure coming from supporting some of the other provinces who are currently sort of just later in their, in their stages of, of disease waves, et cetera, and so seeing some support there for folks coming from other places, other provinces, to be treated in hospitals here, and that's also reasonable, and it's important that we can, can do that when we can. But I think the, the larger pieces really are around vaccination, so let's talk a little bit about that. We've got over 63% of adults in Lampton County immunized with over one dose, that's pretty good, it grows every day. We should be able to get about 30,000 doses administered, nearly 30,000 doses administered through the month of June. A substantial portion of those will still be first doses, the first few weeks of June, but we're gonna, we've already expanded our bookings to second doses for large groups of the population. First, the smaller groups that were initially eligible, and now the 80-plusers have all been invited to book their shots, as well as people who received first doses prior to March 16th. All of those people, if you're speaking to any of, of folks in your community who are asking about that, then they should have already gotten an email, but if they haven't and they're in those, those two categories, 80-plus, or got their dose before March 16th, then they can also call our vaccine booking center, and we'll be happy to book them an appointment.
This meeting is being recorded.
Just gonna continue with that. So, you'll see the first couple of weeks of June, largely still first doses, but you'll start to see second doses start ramping up later in June, and then, you know, most of the summer will be largely second doses, as well as sort of catch-ups for people who, who are interested in getting first doses. So, that's really good. I think 30,000 doses this month is gonna go a long way to what we've already done, and I think, you know, I just want to remind the group that, that the whole vaccine effort is a real, I, from my personal perspective, it's going really well, but I also think it's a really nice example of a substantial collective effort, right? There are lots and lots of parties who are, are getting involved in doing this, and so it's, it's Public Health, it's EMS, it's Blue Water Health, it's, right, our municipal partners, our volunteers, local and regional industries have participated in, in assistance, healthcare providers, pharmacies, it really is, there's so many groups of people who are involved in this, and I hope I haven't left anyone out, but there really are, there are tons and tons and tons of, of people who are involved in this, and, and I think it's really important to just acknowledge all of their efforts and their, their passion for, for getting us to this place so that we can move to the next place, right? So, let's talk about the next place. The stay-at-home order was lifted today, but it's, I haven't really heard word yet, and I think we're all waiting about when the reopening framework pieces will start. It's possible that they might start earlier than previously predicted. That's based on vaccination rates, you know, at the level of the population, as well as on other things, hospital, you know, pressures, cases and transmission, things like that, right? So, we're still waiting for word on that. And, and so that's gonna take us, as we get more and more and more vaccines, you'll start to see the ability for people to do more, but there's always gonna be a tension through the summer, just keep that in mind, about when should restrictions on certain things be lifted, and under what circumstances, and why, et cetera, right? So, lifting all of these other things that we've been doing, screening, et cetera, when should those things be lifted? And frankly, I think it's important to, to set out to the group that nobody really knows the answer to that, and so what we have to do is sort of look around at what other people have done, what happens in other countries that have had, you know, that have moved forward on this before we have, and how has that worked for them, and then use that information to make some decisions around how we would slowly and progressively remove these different pieces of restriction. So, that's reopening, and then, you know, I know that you're gonna hear a delegation on this, I think, from the college later, but, but I would also just reflect that it's also nearly time for a much larger discussion on the bigger R. So, I call reopening the small r, and the big R is recovery. And that's actually gonna take a larger proportion of, of time from a bunch of different organizations, including the county, right, to think through what is a really solid, comprehensive recovery plan that, that achieves, you know, preparedness and all of those things, but also some kind of repair of the multiple levels of damage that have been done by the pandemic, right? And so that's really, I think, where we all need to start turning some attention to, not that the vaccines aren't important, they are really important, they're going really well, and that's what's gonna be the baseline for moving us over to these other pieces around recovery, but, but starting to think about what does recovery look like, what are the different domains of recovery that we need to address, and thinking through that, and looking around for other models and stuff, will become an ongoing kind of piece of work, starting probably with individual organizations, but hopefully merging into a larger kind of organized community framework for, for recovery. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Renade. Any questions for the doctor this morning? Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, Ward Marriott, sorry, just slips out. The discussion on, on, on second doses, just to circle back to that, if you wouldn't mind, would you mind reminding me what that looks like in terms of, you know, we were pre-booking for 16-week intervals, and you mentioned that folks would, is that get an email to, to basically rebook at a new timeframe? And what would that interval be looking like at this point?
Sure, thanks, Counselor, that's a good question. So, yes, in essence, when we gave first doses, the second dose was automatically booked at a 16-week interval by the system. That system at the time didn't really take into account, A, the ramping up of clinics, right, so that you can do more with a given day, and B, the ramping up of vaccine supply that then allows you to do more sooner. So, so really, I would say that all of those second-dose appointments are no longer the day, that's not when you're getting it, because it's four months, we were able to move that up earlier. So, it's hard to say how much earlier, because it really still is gonna be dependent right now on how many people are booking first-dose appointments, and then how many people we can make eligible for second doses. But certainly, you know, at least several weeks earlier, probably, people will get it compared to the 16 weeks that we were projecting, right? So, I think the important message is that don't, don't consider your second-dose appointment as valid, we will send you an appointment, an email, as you become eligible, based on when you got your first vaccine and the province's eligibility criteria, to book another appointment for a second dose at an earlier date, and that'll just be dependent on what dates we're booking out from that point on.
I have Counselor Byrd, and then Counselor Stark.
Thank you, Ward. Is everybody getting screen every few seconds, like me?
Not, not here, Counselor.
Okay. Weird, but just a quick, I, it keeps coming on saying my internet cable, but I'm not using Wi-Fi, I'm using a new laptop, and I have an internet cable plugged in, so that reliant upon anything, or hardwired, and yet keeps freezing, what's happening? Good night. Good morning, Dr. Renade. I have heard that you are thinking of making vaccinations mandatory for the staff with care homes, can you please confirm?
Counselor Byrd, you are cutting in and out, I'm not sure if Dr. Renade heard the full question or not, if you might, don't mind repeating it? You are froze now.
I did hear something about mandatory vaccines in long-term care, that's what it sounded like, and I don't know if Counselor can give me a thumbs up if that's true or not, because she seems to be frozen, but I, let's presume that that's the...
I think she wanted you to confirm that, Dr. Renade.
Okay. So, so we had had conversations around whether or not these vaccines would be mandatory, and in what circumstances. The latest information I have is with respect to long-term care, and that there is a ministry or a minister's directive to all long-term care homes, and actually, I'm not sure if that also extends to retirement homes or not, but they, but certainly for long-term care homes, there is a current directive that comes into effect, I believe it's the 1st of July, that, that requires the homes to have a vaccination policy, and that that policy needs to contain at least the following three things. One, that, that the home has possession of a record of vaccination of all staff, or a record of exemption for a staff that has an exemption, or a record that a person has, without an exemption, has completed an educational module. So, those are the three conditions that I've seen specified in the minister's directive. I think there's lots of conversation about how to implement that, because that directive just came out, I think, yesterday, maybe the day before, something like that. So, conversation ongoing about how that would be rolled out in homes, and how that would work, and all of that, all the implementation pieces. But it is a minister's directive from the Ministry of Long-Term Care.
So, thank you for that part, so that would, you said July 1st, so if that comes into being, what would then happen for the people that choose, I'm not talking about people with exemptions, or people that have had the vaccination, but people who choose not to have it, are they going to lose their jobs?
Counselor, it seems like on the face of it, they would be required to prove that they have completed an educational module. So, I think that, that's how it would be, that's how it's framed as the directive to the homes, that the homes are required to keep the following records, whether the person has been immunized, whether they have an exemption, and if neither of those two things are true, that they have completed an educational module. In some ways, it mirrors the, the criteria for immunization under the Immunization of School Pupils Act. So, similar, that's very similar to what we're doing in schools with, with vaccinations for children, that it's either that we have the record, or that we have the record of the exemption, or that the parents have completed an educational module that the ministry provides. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Stark, and then Counselor Napper.
Yes, thanks, Doctor. I wondered if you could comment on, assuming that we have enough supply of vaccine, what will activate the use of the Clearwater Arena as a secondary site to the Point Edward Mass Vaccination Site?
Sure, Counselor. Again, largely dependent on vaccine supply, we're looking at the possibility of running a few extra days out there this, this month, which would be great, but having said that again, in order to run two high-volume centers, especially two high-volume centers at the same time, you really need a substantial amount of vaccine. We have not seen that kind of supply indicated in our allocation for the next month, and although we keep hearing month-to-month about sudden increases in vaccines, we have, those have yet to materialize. So, so really vaccine-dependent, but it looks like we might be able to do a few additional days out there in June.
Assuming that the vaccine is, is available, do we have the personnel to be able to staff that facility?
Yes, Counselor, we do. Again, I mentioned it's a combined effort, so we have a lot of different partners bringing staff and resources to the table, and, and there are lots of volunteers who are helping out as well, and so, yeah, all of the plans for those things include capacity around human resources and the ability to, to maintain that.
Counselor Napper, then Counselor Bean, please.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Dr. Renade, I got a question from a, a local farmer there, it's got 25 migrant, migrant workers there, and he said that in other jurisdictions, they, they have a mobile clinic comes out, they find a kind of owner, it's time they get it interpreted or go with them, and that many people involved in it, and I wondered, do you have the capacity or, or anything in program where you come out to the, the location and do a, a mobile unit?
Thank you, Counselor. We do, actually, that's part of our mobile strategy that we have, and we, and, and similar to the mobile testing strategy that we used on, on farms, we are also, we have elements of a mobile vaccination strategy that can be mobilized for that purpose. So, if you have them, let us know, if you have them call us, we can, we can arrange something. Now, again, the timing needs to be flexible, but we can make it work, because mobile work is smaller volume, and therefore, we can't do as much of it in a given day, but we have the capacity to do it.
Just a follow-up, who would they call, Dr. Renade?
If they, if they just call us, or I can follow up with you and give you a contact to...
Okay, that'd be great, thank you very much.
No problem.
We have Counselor Bean next.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I just want to give a shout-out to the staff of the Clearwater Arena, I was there the other day, and what an amazing job that they're doing there, so keep up the good work, and I hope it all goes as good as it was the other day. Thank you very much for the stuff you're doing.
Thank you for that, Counselor Bean. I can echo that, I was there a week ago too, and like all the comments that's come through so far, there's, hasn't been a negative comment yet, so, thank you, Dr. Renade. Counselor White.
Thank you. And just to dovetail on that, the, the staff were amazing, I was there with my daughter last week as well, so at, at Point Edward, so again, very well done, from a parent's perspective, and then from the parent of a, of a child with special needs, it was handled with care and concern, so very appreciative of that. My question relates to AstraZeneca and those who were vaccinated, like myself, at the pharmacy. It's likely looking like the province is shifting towards boosters being the Pfizer or Moderna at this stage, and if that's the case, would those members of our community who were vaccinated at a pharmacy have their records shifted over to Public Health and then be contacted by Public Health, or would that remain within the domain of the, the original vaccinator?
Good question, Counselor. So, so I just want to, I think there are two points of clarification that I can offer. The first is that if you intend to get a dose of AstraZeneca vaccine, then that's still gonna be done by this, by the original provider, okay? If you intend to get a second dose of a different vaccine, once that is approved by the province, then that could be done through us very easily, and the system is the same. So, what we're doing is some background work right now to pull that data off of the system, to see if we can then put out sort of notification to those folks in case they want to book with us for a second dose of a non-AstraZeneca vaccine, once that's approved by the province. So, both of those things are possible, it's just up to the person to decide which one they want, and if it's AstraZeneca, they'll have to go back to where they got it from, because that's how the province is deciding where those future AstraZeneca doses go, right? And if they want to get a second dose of a different vaccine once it's approved, they can call us, or we're also working on a mechanism to reach out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Counselor Arnold, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, just a comment, I booked Mom and Dad's, rebooked their appointment yesterday, the website worked really well, they both got an email, so thank you for that. I'm just wondering, Dr. Renade, if you've seen any more information in regards to an H1, and I believe it's an N3 virus, that's just, they said it was just transmitted, or the first person in China that had been identified as a transmission between animal and human, and that was on news this morning. So, I just wondered, maybe we could keep that in the forefront, and in a future time, maybe let us know what, what's going on with that, and what impact it could have on the COVID situation that we have currently.
Sure, Counselor, I'll, I'll look into it, and then, and then maybe I can bring another update back as needed, or, or to dovetail it. Remember, H1, N3, and those kinds of things are designations for influenza viruses, so that would be a much more common circumstance that we would expect, and it's not a, it's, so anyway, but we can, we can talk more about it as, as more information comes up.
Counselor Broad.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. Dr. Renade, I'm getting very frustrated with people that jump on our system, and usually it's after announcements made, like on Monday, that they're gonna take eight years and plus, and they run to the media, they run to social media, say, oh, I couldn't get on, it was terrible, blah, blah, blah. Is there any way you can put out there every once in a while, like how many hits you get at the public health, how many phone calls a day you take, how many the provinces, the provincial site takes, that kind of information, so maybe people will have a little better understanding that if you're getting 2, 3, 4,000 calls a day, the reason why they can't get through to you, and, and I'm really getting frustrated at people's lack of patience, that when, when the announcement is made, that everybody's trying to do the same thing, and you guys can only do so much. And I know we really appreciate what you are doing, and if there's some message you could put out there every once in a while, just to remind people of the number of hits and calls and stuff that you're taking, thank you.
Sure, Counselor, I think we can definitely do that. I, I think that it's just part of the world that we live in right now, and people are frustrated, and right, if I had a ma, if I had some magic cure for, for impatience, I would have used it months ago. But, so, so, you know, we will, we'll do our best with that, I think we still have to acknowledge that the way the system is set up too, we don't get a lot of notice when new announcements are being made, and so because of that, we haven't had a lot of time to prepare for the implementation of those announcements, right? And so that's, that's the piece that we get caught a lot into, and so, yeah, I, it, we will do that as well, I mean, we'll put out the notices about what we're, the high volumes and things like that, to keep people aware of it. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Just a quick question for the two municipalities, the Point Edward and Sarnia. I'm looking over Mayor Hand's shoulder at the chip truck, we have a chip truck at the other arena, it takes us in.
I, I missed it, sorry, some of the chip truck?
Right, I'm just looking over your shoulder at the chip truck in your picture there.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's, yes.
It takes us in.
There's a chip truck that goes to the long-term care home in, in Forest.
And I saw that, made me wonder.
Okay, any other questions? Let's see, we got first, Counselor Bieber, I guess, was first, and then Deputy Warden Hand.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, just, there's been the talk of the vaccination centers in Point Edward and Clearwater, and I've heard, again, I want to give a shout-out to the people that are operating in the forest, it's not a mass vaccination clinic per se as the other ones, but they're vaccinating, I heard, up to 600 people a day, and they're only operating two days a week, and I guess that's, when it's set up and, and operating, whether there's, when more vaccines come, will there be more days in Forest, because I hear it's an excellent setup and working very well. So, just a shout-out to all of them, and all of the volunteers, but not to forget the, the good work that's happening in Forest as well.
Deputy Warden Hand, please.
So, I just, one comment towards Counselor Weaver's, Mayor Weaver's talk, there was a pop-up clinic in Watford over the weekend, I believe, I, I talked to a teacher that went out there to get a sex, second shot, so they could move up in the schedule, so that was in Watford on the weekend, and that went well. I just wanted to ask Dr. Renade, Mayor Bradley and I were on a call on Friday with Minister Blair discussing the border, and one of the things that was talked about was collecting the information on vaccinations that happened outside of our region, so all of the snowbirds and people that went in other areas. So presumably, and I know you touched on this before, that this would be done, to get a truer number of total vaccinations, so you're saying 63%, but we could be beyond that?
Yes, yes, we could be, I mean, depending on a number of people who may have gotten their vaccine in, in the US or other jurisdictions, right? So, a couple of things are going on there. One, the, the, the province's system is really self-contained within the province, and so what we've done is we've put out a survey to ask for people who have received their immunizations outside of the province or outside of the country, to give us their information so we can follow up with them at a time when the system is capable of inputting that information. So, what they're doing right now is they're, they're working on making it so that the Ontario system can accept immunization information from other places in a way that's valid, right? And once they've got that, and we're able to enter that information into the system, then we'll be able to circle back to the people who completed the survey and say, can you give us the details of your immunization, so we can enter them into the system?
Sorry, and the other part of that was, at one point in time, the vaccinations that were done through the pharmacies were not included in your, your number. I think that's changed now.
They are now.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions this morning? I don't think I had anybody's hand or... Looks like we may have answered all the questions, Dr. Renade. Okay, seeing none, thank you again for coming on, and it was a good update, and like everybody said, congratulations on all the good work that you're still doing, and continue to do over the next couple months. Thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Okay, next on the agenda, item seven is delegations, if I could have a motion to allow delegations, please, moved by Counselor Loosely, second by Counselor White, all in favor? opposed, that's carried. Our first delegation is no stranger to us, Judith Morris, President and CEO of Lampton College, and I guess also with is, that I, I'm not gonna try and pronounce your last name, sorry.
Mehdi Shidexide.
Welcome, Judy, and it's an honor to have you again, I know you're coming up close to your retirement, so it's good that you are speaking to us today before you go, so thanks for your presentation.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, it's, it's a real pleasure to be here. We also have Rob Curtis, who is with us today as well, and so he'll be presenting through the, the presentation. I, I do want to tell you that it is a pleasure to be here, and I, the purpose of our presentation is to really tell you about Lampton College and, and how we've planned, and I, I was interested to hear Dr. Renade saying, you know, we need to plan for the future, not only because of the vaccine, vaccinations, but how, how, you know, we can recover economically and socially, et cetera, and so what we've done is actually develop a plan, it's not as fulsome as Dr. Renade, Renade indicated, but it certainly is a great start, and I, I think you'll hopefully find it, it very helpful. We also want to talk a little bit about the wonderful donation that this council made to this college, and one for which we will always, always be grateful. So, I'm going to ask my colleague, Mehdi Shidexide, if he would put up the presentation, please. So, you see that this is the athletics complex, and it's a beautiful picture of our wonderful building, and so today we're going to talk about our project that's called Accelerating Industry 4.0, and that's been part of our strategic plan for a number of years, so it's nothing new, but when you get into a, a time like the pandemic, you get into rapid acceleration, and so that's what we're talking about with Industry 4.0, and as a result, we develop a plan, what that we call Project Momentum. But first of all, if you'd go to the next slide, I want to talk to you a little bit about your building. And so I, I do want to remember the past Warden Bev McDougall, and how critical she was in, in driving this forward, but there are many, many of our friends on this council who have remained on this council and voted for a $5 million donation to ensure that this building was in fact built, and it was not just a donation... And it was not just a donation of $5 million. It was a donation of um, a uh, a commitment uh, to education. It was a donation um, that certainly acted as faith, uh, faith in the college. And what it did was it was a catalyst to the province and the federal government to in fact then donate uh, $10 million each and enabled us to build this building. So honestly, we can't thank you enough. And and so and and every time we look at it, I I have I I have great feelings of um, of admiration and uh, and and certainly warm feelings of the times we spent together. I uh, I do want to tell you some of the things in the last year that this building has in fact acted as a catalyst for. And one in is in fact, community research. Uh, I will tell you just briefly that um, some of the things that we've done in research that have related to COVID, COVID. We're we're actually involved in vaccine research. Uh, you know that we um, worked on a san- sanitizer um, development project. Um, we have been developing 3D printing of masks for Blue Water Health. And we're also involved in a project with Suncor and Western and Pond Technologies and Immudex called Microalgae as an antigen source um, for um, SARS. And that is actually in um, uh, for approval at Health Canada right now. So I think it's going to have some great opportunities for us and for all those uh, groups uh, involved. But our research team uh, was involved, you know, they were right in the building, they were working at home. And so they were very, very focused um, on uh, ensuring that uh, we were providing supports for the community and of course, the long term of our community as well. Um, we have a lot of students who have been involved and Dr. Renedey, um, he didn't mention them, but uh, he certainly knows about it and he's been a wonderful, I have to give him every credit. He's been wonderful with with us and uh, vaccinating some of our frontline staff um, and when we, when we needed it most and uh, and been extremely helpful. But we've been training people on immunizations. Uh, we've been training pharmacy staff. We talked about the pharmacies having vaccines, take uh, treating that, uh, training them on um, uh, administering im- immunizations. We've had paramedic students uh, screening and vaccinations at Blue Water Health and nursing students were screeners at uh, at Blue Water Health and on and on it goes as part of your building. So now I'm going to uh, move on to uh, Project Momentum. And so uh, as we uh, moved through the pandemic, as I indicated, um, in the fall, we started to think of, okay, this can't last forever. Surely this pandemic is not going to last forever. And uh, started to plan for what we looked like uh, post uh, COVID. And we have a video uh, that we call Project Momentum.
The pandemic has been hard. But with adversity comes opportunity. Now is the time to be driven by digitization, automation and data to accelerate Industry 4.0. It's time to keep humanization at the heart of progress and elevate inclusivity. It's time to engage business and industry to create the active learners who will become an agile workforce. It's time to put students at the center of a personalized journey, one shaped by experiential learning and high flex courses and enhanced by diverse student life opportunities and accessible service delivery. It's time to enrich our community through immigration and power economic development through innovation and collaboration. This is the time to challenge, to change, to learn, to grow. Now is the time for Lampton College.
So thank you. Thank you for putting up the uh, the video and we appreciate it. Um, uh, it is meant to uh, act as a stimulus for what we're, we're going to tell you a little bit about next. And so Mehdi, if you'd go to the next uh, the next shot, that would be great. If you're able. There we go. And so uh, we talked a little bit about this before, but we really want to work with our community. We are part of the community. It's called the Community College. And so we're looking at social and economic prosperity through innovation and collaboration. And you'll see this throughout our presentation. And so in the next slide, which you'll go to Mehdi, please. We want to tell you about how we started this project. And we started it with core drivers because you can't start anything unless you have a strategy. And as we have a great strategic plan, it's just been accelerated. But you have to have core drivers, you have to have values that take you forward. And so these these values that we worked with were Industry 4.0 driven. And you know, everybody knows here that information and communications technology has taken over every, every facet of the of the world that we work and live in. Digitization is critical, automation, everything. Think about your cars, think about your fridges. Data, we need data, data, data. Everything is, you know, even Dr. Renedey, you're asking him for data on a num- number, number of things. And it's incredibly pervasive. But what we can't, can't, can't lose sight of, and we said it in the video, is that we are humans. We can't let all of this, what seems to be hard technology, take over. We have to work with it or we won't be able to excel. And so humanization is a critical piece. And what we also want to have in this humanization, in this world where we work together with robots, et cetera, is this inclusivity because we need everybody to come together. We learn from people of different languages, of different races, of different colors. When they all come together, when they all come together, it's a beautiful thing. And so in this world where we're driving very, very quickly ahead, we are going to come together as humans and work together to drive a vision. And so the next slide, Rob Curtis, our next President of Lampton College is going to present the next slide. He's the VPA right now of uh, uh, obviously academic and student success. And uh, part of his vision is flexible education, which is the overall umbrella for moving us forward. Thank you, Mehdi. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Rob. Gosh, sorry.
Thank you very much, Judy. It's a pleasure to uh, to be here today. Um, as we got into the plan on Project Momentum, I think the question that, one of the key questions we we kept coming back to is what has worked during the pandemic that we want to build on? Um, we know doing, through doing pulse surveys with our students the last year and our staff that, you know, there's not a whole lot of interest in being 100% online. Our students miss our campus. They miss uh, the co-curricular aspects of campus. They missed the peer-to-peer relationships. But there are certainly aspects through these pulse surveys we've picked up on that is really all founded in what Judy talked about in with the term flexibility. And I think that's what the pandemic has done in terms of education delivery, is it's really expedited the need for flexibility with respect to how our students will consume education going forward. And we've termed that to be consistent with Industry 4.0, Education 4.0. And that really entails a variety of things. It could still be that some courses will be online, but really what we're talking about with flexibility is hybrid development, which could be a combination of face-to-face or online where you're here some days and other days you're not. Or high flex delivery, where 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 students can choose how to consume their courses. They could be at home today, doing it through an online platform, but tomorrow they could choose to come into the college and do it face-to-face. And later in the week, they could, they could choose to do it asynchronously where they're completing work, uh, their their work at their own pace. Hybrid Student Services has been a real success for us during um, during the pandemic in that for in many pockets of our Student Services areas, counseling, accessibility. We've seen a lot less cancellations from students for these important services when they can access them remotely. And going forward, we are, we will retain some version of student services where it makes sense and where it doesn't compromise the student experience, we will retain some version of that remotely so that students do have that increased access that they have enjoyed uh, during the pandemic. And then lastly, like many organizations right now, a key theme of what we're talking about is a framework around flexible workforce. And you know, we know that again, it's been a, it 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 could be a way into the future to to not only retain talent, but attract new talent. So we are very much focused on um, our employees. Uh, again, with the student experience at the top of our list as the key criteria, our employees being able to to work in a, in a bit of a blended and remote format. So uh, that work is ongoing and and happening now. But really, this is a key pillar for us in terms of our core service being the delivery of education and is ultimately going to position our college really well to come out of the the pandemic with, to the point of the project, great momentum. So um, looking forward to that in the in the coming months. So at this point, I'll introduce my colleague, Mehdi Shikzadea, uh, our Vice President of Research and Innovation, who will speak about the community sustainability, inclusivity and economic development pieces of Project Momentum.
Thank you, Rob. And it's a pleasure to be here. Um, the Project Momentum has a very big focus on the community sustainability, inclusivity and of course, economic development side through various um, uh, projects and initiatives, which we are, we have clustered them in a few groups. Uh, one area is about the training. There will be a lot of demands for the new training uh, with respect to the Industry 4.0, the disruption that is coming and also the demand that is coming. Uh, using various type of um, uh, training uh, platforms, including micro credentials and competency-based training. We have already collaborated with many organizations in our community to provide that support. Uh, as Judy indicated, Industry 4.0 is transforming our our um, industry and our organizations and way of uh, doing things. So that requires support. Many of our industry needs uh, support to be able to adopt and embed and integrate digital technologies into their process, operations and products. Uh, we are very happy to say that we are working with many industries in our local community to do that. Examples are a lot, but one that is recently is being done, how the welding shop is using sort of a semi-robotic system that we developed together to improve their operations and also meet the demand. On the city lab side, you have heard a lot, uh, recently, the collaborations that started with the City of Sarnia, thanks to the city and the mayor. Uh, we and we have received many projects. This project was received positively uh, with the county. And I'm happy to say that the MOU is over, is under review right now. Uh, we see a huge potential that the college can provide resources to evaluate and contribute to many projects and initiatives in our community. Uh, also, there will be a focus on the environmental side with respect to water, air quality, um, the recycling and pollutions that we have. And there are many projects that one that is already a start is about the plastic collections and analysis of our lakes and rivers. So that is uh, in collaborations with a few organizations, including University of Toronto and and Pollution Probe, which is a Ontario-wide uh, non-for-profit that is focused on the plastics. On the social innovation side, many projects are underway. And actually, as of even yesterday, we received many good news about those that we are uh, applying and getting grants to support those social innovations with respect to the challenges in our community or opportunities in our communities. Also, there's a huge focus on the economic side. Uh, we have done research for 15 years and we have contributed to the commercialization of many of that research. But now from now, Project Momentum puts a commitment to us that to to pursue that strongly as a mandate. We work with all of our industry partners, particularly our local industry partners, to make sure that the products that we develop through innovation and research has opportunity to be commercialized. And and there are many again examples here that one of them that comes to mind and is really uh, something that we are very proud is is on the software side, that company, Non-Link to Feed, developed a tech software that is being commercialized across North America. And the next company is in the battery side that Alumna Power, a startup company out of Sarnia Lampton, that is developing a new uh, energy storage using the alum- aluminum air technologies. And hopefully, it's going to be commercialized uh, in a wide uh, variety of applications. And also, we have a huge focus on the industry attraction through innovations. We know that Sarnia has uh, a huge advantage in many jurisdictions, particularly in bigger cities, uh, being on the border side and lower operation side, very industrial culture that we have and also the innovation culture that we have in our community. Collaboration spirit that we have in our community also is very effective. So we hope that through innovation, we can attract industry in various sectors to our community, which can create jobs and stimulate the economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mehdi. I'm muted. No. We have to do that once a day. It just keeps you humble. Um, so thank you for that, uh, Rob and and Mehdi. Great, great presentations. And so um, I think you get the sense that uh, what we're trying to do is to provide uh, really a flexible education. We're all are invited to come into that actual, uh, the educational experience. And it's not just flexible, it's also in the way that it's delivered. So it might be micro credentials, little bits of learning, larger bits of learning certifications, et cetera, and meeting industry needs. So we want to provide the students and the employees and the graduates and the upskilling and the reskilling to industry to ensure that they have the people they need to continue. But in addition to that, we're not doing, that's very traditional, not traditional, but that's that's been our core business and that's what we will continue to do. But in addition to that, the the other part of it is the research where we attract startup companies, where we attract industry into Sarnia Lampton. And so all of that combined into an accelerated uh, Project Momentum, um, we're here to help is really what we want to say. And I also want to say finally that I I want to thank you all. Um, I've had 10 years of collaboration with all of you. Um, it's been a joy. It's been a pleasure. It's um, uh, I think we've helped to build this community together and uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Judy, uh, Mehdi and Rob. Are there any questions from council? Deputy Warden Hand, please.
Thank you, Judy. That was um, a really great update. My question is um, could I get a link to the video? I would like to use it in uh, our own council session for our municipality. And you know, we have our residents signing on to to the council meeting, so I would like to share it broadly, more broadly. And also, um, thank you. And then also, I want to wish you all the best. It's been a joy working with you. And you're turning it over to someone that we worked with that uh, we know it will be in good hands. So all the best to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I really appreciate that. And certainly we'll, we'll make sure you get that link. And uh, thank you for the kind wishes. And yes, Rob is going to be awesome.
Counselor Bushy, please.
Just one comment. Uh, when Andy Brandt and I worked for government, we always supported Lampton College. And I did, whether it was from France or Sarnia. Uh, and just like to say that we, since we are in a renaming business, if the the renaming Lampton College ever came up, I'd like to go on record that Judy would be considered number one.
Oh, so sweet. Thank you. Very kind of you. Thank you.
Any other, uh, Counselor Bradley, please?
Yes, and to uh, Judy, we've had that opportunity to work for 10 years. And it's been a good one. A lot of productive things have happened. And we will have another day when we get to uh, congratulate you on on your record there. Uh, can you give some really general terms? One of the key things about the college is the international students. And uh, I think it's it's important for the community to know that um, yes, there are issues going on right now, obviously, uh, with COVID. But you're very much focused on the future and and Rob will be taking that torch with the international students. So I just wanted to give us a really high level um, comments on where you're at and where you're going.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Bradley. I I really appreciate that. Um, you know, uh, with COVID, uh, the numbers of international students have been declined uh, significantly, although some will understand that we do have two sites in Toronto, one in in Toronto and one in Mississauga, where we have approximately 5,000 to 5,500 students, international, all international students there. But our numbers here in Sarnia have declined. We now have the opportunity and is has been supported by uh, the the ministry actually and and actually uh, not only supported, but but driven to have us increase the number of international students um, in Sarnia Lampton. And so those numbers, well, you will see them starting to do increase in the fall and certainly in the winter quite significantly. Um, and uh, we are planning for that in lots of different ways. We have a task force um, for in the community. Um, Rob and his uh, his uh, crew, they're really uh, developing uh, lots of strategies for housing, et cetera. But you know what the ultimate uh, intention is? It's it's about immigration. And it it's about um, taking what is has been a fairly stagnant population into one that is growing and vibrant and has the skilled workers to really ensure that we have a community that continue to continues to excel. So we we anticipate that these students will be an incredible pipeline to immigration and to a uh, an incredible community, which with lots of different uh, cultures and uh, and nationalities here, right here in our community. and nationalities here, right here in our community. So thank you for that. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Other questions for the three? Seeing none? Thank you again, Judy, Mehdi and Rob. And as Counselor Bradley said, we'll hopefully see you again on a more formal departure.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. We appreciate the time. Thank you, counselors. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Next delegation is Sarah Duplessis, Administrative Assistant Treasurer of Peacekeepers Park. Sarah, are you, there you are.
Hello. Thank you. I would like to thank you very much for having me here today. The reason that we are here today is we heard through a past board member that Leighton Shores may have some land that would be available. Peacekeeper Park has been currently located at Lake Whitaker Conservation Area in Elmer for the past 20 years. And we were notified the same week COVID hit that they weren't going to be renewing our lease. So we have been packing up and looking for new land. So I would just like to introduce you to Peacekeeper Park and let you know the possibilities that we could bring to Leighton and Leighton County in general and what we've already done as an organization to Leighton County. So if I could just share the screen, I can. Okay. So Peacekeeper Park was founded in 2001 by a group of volunteers. And our original goals were to replace what the Canadian Connect Movement lost with the closing of Space Biberwash, creating an educational memorial to Canadian peacekeepers who have been lost in the line of duty and to honor Canadian peacekeepers for offering programming to both veterans and our youth. And we also wanted to provide a threat free, safe, challenging, affordable adventure training environment in which young Canadians can develop both physically and intellectually in order to better contribute their country, community and throughout their lives. Peacekeeper Park, we also believe that we have respect for Canadian peacekeepers, respect for young Canadians that we are offering the services to, respect for those that we work with, respect for our neighbors and respect for the environment in which we work and train. We also respect the laws, customs and honorable traditions to Canadian forces, the law of the land and the bylaws of Peacekeeper Park. In the spring of 2020, just as we were being introduced to COVID, we were told that Lake Whitaker Conservation Area, our home for the past 20 years, would be not renewing our contract. This was a devastating blow to not only our volunteers, as there's also public, veterans, EMTs, family members of our campers, as well as the general public. And we are now in the process of packing up our items and storing them while we look to relocate. This is the land that we currently had at Lake Whitaker Conservation Area that we are losing. As you'll see, Peacekeeper Park has a great many ties to Leighton County and we would very much like to make it our new home. The founder of the park, the late retired Major Eugene Smith, was very active in his community with legions as well as veterans. His son, he was the son of Petrolia's late mayor, Bud Smith. So I don't know if any of you knew Gene, but he was the founder of Peacekeeper Park. Petrolia and Sarnia are frequent guests at the park and they train there often. They are also involved with the building of Peacekeeper Park. So what program do we currently offer? We offer abseiling and rappelling and our certified instructors make this a finding at personal challenge. And our instructors are certified through the Association for Challenge Course Technology. We have team building and leadership. We offer this to youth and adults and we help use place for our youth to communicate and lead and to step out of the comfort zones. We offer canoeings, all of our certified, our training, sorry, all of our instructors are fully trained. We have archery, hiking, and we have our memorials. Before all else, Peacekeeper Park is a memorial to fallen veterans and offered a more pathway. All of the path there was a cross representing each fallen soldier. And inside our mess hall, you will find the pictures of the fallen. Many of our structures and buildings were named in honors of fallen soldiers. Brett's Tower, the Abseil Rock Tower. Corporal Brett Donald Poland died on April 8, 2007 with five other soldiers with their armored vehicle, drove over a large roadside bomb likely laid by the Taliban. His unit was operating west of Canhard City and according to the National Defense News release. Corporal Paul Loomis from Kenlaaki. We have a tower and it's our Abseil Tower and it is in his name. And his family was very much part of the building and the promoting of that tower. Our staffer cabin was donated in honor of Wally Clark of Etta Skellen. There is Gene and Linda Clark, his wife. And that was when the building was donated. And we had a blessing by a native shaman by the name of Brian Hall. The private cabin was built with funds by the Margaret Stokes chapter of the IODE in honor of Private William Cusley. As you may know, he was born in Portland and he was killed in Afghanistan. The morning he left, he lost a bet to his mother for $50, saying that she wouldn't cry, but he had to run back off the bus one more time and tell her that he loved her. From the beginning, none of our staff at Peacekeeper Park, unless their training, have been paid for their campus volunteer hours. From our administrative assistants, maintenance, in much of our buildings, all of our structures, keeping up the grounds and times, they're all volunteers. We believe in teaching citizenship to our youth. And over the last 20 years, we have signed over 10,000 voluntary hours in Ontario's youth working towards their OSFSD as well as other programs. As we move and grow, we would like to make this a main focus, helping the youth of today obtain their volunteer hours and teach them the importance of citizenship. We have offered many weekends, free to command, help books and learning skills, make new friends and of course, have lots of fun while doing it. Any Canadian or member of the Canadian forces and their family are welcome to stay at Peacekeeper Park free of charge. We offer a safe place and offer supports for veterans living with PTSD. While at this time, we only offer it to military families, part of the new vision is to expand this to any frontline workers who've suffered mental wounds while protecting and serving Canadians. We have hosted several weekends during the summer for our military resource groups and their families. And we ran programming for the children of the volunteers. We also offer a Peacekeeper Tribute Day every August 9. Our youth customers, we originally opened for cadets group, but with the closing of the Girl Guides and Scout Groups, we started getting many of the requests for the park. And we have offered programming in many areas of youth and services. We have used the London Regional HIV Units, the Craigwood Youth Centre, the Boys and Girls Club of London, inner city youth groups of Kitchener Waterloo and various school groups, including Kenwood Central from Forest and Plumping, Wyoming Public School. The students from LCCVI Special Education Class, regular customers coming every year for the school on trip. This is some of the programming that we offer the campers. The Special Ed class at LCCVI raised money by selling hot dogs for a year to make or give us for our act monitor. It was a huge success for them and it was absolutely so exciting for them to have it. And that is one of their students. He is actually not a student any longer. He is now in the community, but areas fishing at Lake Whitaker with one of the volunteers from LCCVI. And these are just some pictures of different things that we do. We have groups from different inner city groups. The gentleman at the bottom with the saw, he started off as one of our campers. He is now employed by Denning Brothers and works for the Staffordary Funeral Home. Just some more things that we offer at the park. The OPP, London Police Forces, used our grounds free of charge for various trainings activities. Some examples are the OPP Tactical Units, the London Police K-9 Unit, Ground Search and Rescue. The tactical unit used to come to our summer camp and show them their things. And let me tell you, you haven't seen anything until you see a camper with an individual holding a military style assault rifle. It's very interesting to see and a lot of fun for the campers. Malahide Fire Department built window and chair walk wall to assist with the training that they did at the park. So you can see at the top of the rock wall, there is a little square there. That's the window and they would use that for the training that they did there, again, all free of charge. We offered the Duke of Edinburgh Program, which was initiated by the late Duke of Edinburgh. And that's just a quote about his visions for the Edinburgh. He wanted to be a tism, achievable, voluntary, developmental, balanced, progressive, inspirational, persistent and enjoyable. When the individuals achieve their gold level award, they receive their award from the royal family. We have had many of our volunteers and clients receive their awards from his Royal Highness Prince Edward, the Duke of Kent, as well as the late Duke of Edinburgh himself. This is Robin. He was one of our first campers with our special ed program and with Duke Ed. And here we have Prince Philip with Caitlin Bass, who runs our special adventure program, and Megan MacLeod, who is one of our very active volunteers. The adventure camps, we ran a program for, is one of our best known programs. And we started a camp for youth for ages 12 to 21 with disabilities because there's very little programming for youth to this age group. We had 20 campers, seven volunteers who slept in tents, canoed, hiked, abseiled, volunteered, learned about themselves as well as life skills that they didn't know that they were learning at the time. In the summer of 2004, we added a second week and more volunteers. And the campers from the first week returned to enhance skills that they had learned the week before. In the summer of 2005, that was the year we really became who we were. And we added a third program and it's a leadership program where the past campers assisted in running camp, again, learn new skills. By 2006, some of these campers returned to staff. They worked as kitchen, helped out with other campers, did yard work, helped build structures and cleaned up. Because of this, many of these campers now have meaningful employment in their lives in their home communities. One of our longest running campers, turned staff, actually lives in Brooks and Petrolia and he is very active in his community. We have returning campers who now work at Soobees, Walmart, various restaurants, long hair companies, as well as Denning Funeral Homes. And there's some of the activities. This gentleman has almost no mobility at the bottom of, or with his legs. And that is different campers helping him through. This is how we got somebody down the tower using our training. You can see his wheelchair sitting at the bottom. In 2009, we brought a very special guest to the park. The Lieutenant Governor only came to visit the park. He had heard of all the wonderful things we were doing. Having grown up with Petrolia himself, he wanted to come and see what we were doing. Moving forward, our future plans. We need to find the land. That is our most important parts so that we can currently continue with the excellent program that we offer. We are in the process of restructuring, rebuilding and rebanding. That includes our board and some of our mandates. We want to expand from just a memorial to peacekeepers, but to put it out there to all servicemen and women in military, emergency services, to those who have lost their wives, lives and serving Canadians. Offer a safe space for frontline responders living with PTSD. Continue to offer a safe place for youth, including youth at risk. And continue to offer summer programming facilities. Offer volunteer weekends for Leighton's youth to teach them about citizenship and themselves. And possibly tap into the training areas that will be lost with the closing of the Gravenhurst Fire Training Facility. So that is Peacekeeper Park, 20 years in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. I'll open it up for questions to council. Soon as we get our screen, there we go. Counselor Lucie.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. And I just want to thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. I do want to mention, I am very familiar with the Peacekeeper Park through the involvement through the high school, the legion, the IODE. And yes, I knew Eugene very well. I would love to see something like this in Leighton County. But I also want to state my disappointment in the Lake Whitaker Conservation Area. And I think those board members should be ashamed in asking you to leave after 20 years on something as sensitive as this. And as important as this, without some kind of fair notice in 10 years, you'll have to make plans. So I'm really disappointed to hear that. I know this is probably old news. But again, very familiar. I'd love to see something in Leighton County. I want to ask just a question. Is there a number of acres or limited number of acres that you would need?
Um, not really. Our biggest concern is that we were able to, to be able to have access to water in some way, whether it be close that we can ship them down or that it would be attached to it. I know it's kind of hard around here. Um, we had a lot of area because we had access to so much of Lake Whitaker. We would like to be able to build. Did you ever go to Peacekeeper Park? We had kind of little camping areas for the different cadets. So if we had more than one cadet group out, they could be separated. So we're looking for a good chunk of land, but it's negotiable. We're willing to work with what we can get at this point.
Okay, thank you. And again, the community of Petrolia, whether it be the IODE, all of these groups that have contributed money towards this. And again, I knew Eugene very well through the legion and I knew his involvement. He'd love going down there and the volunteers. I just, I don't want to drag this on, but I think this county council needs to know how important this is. And I would love to see something in Leighton County. Thank you, Warden Marriott.
Thank you, thank you. Oh.
Thank you, Counselor Lucie. And Counselor Napper.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Yes, I had the privilege of going down here twice, I believe it was. There is quite a big connection with Leighton County, especially with Eugene there. And he's actually my cousin.
Oh, is he?
Yes. So he, it was really interesting going down there. And with, I was there the day they dedicated to Poland one and I was there one other day. And I know how much work he put into that and stuff. It'd be nice to have it here in Leighton County because we have a lot of ties right across Leighton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Counselor Napper, Counselor Bradley, please.
I guess to the speaker, thank you for the presentation. What is the ask today of the county? Is this for information?
We're looking to see if you have land available that we would be able to move into, be it a lease agreement or we were just, we're looking for land at this point and hoping to be able to negotiate the land.
Okay, now one of your references was to land in Leighton Shore. Were you talking about county land or were you talking about?
Well, Leighton County or Leighton Shores. This is where I got my first invite to come and speak. So I personally live in Leighton Shores, so I know it well. But we would take anywhere in Leighton County to rebuild.
Okay, I don't, I want to be difficult, but I'm trying to be specific. Are you asking Leighton Shores? Are you asking the county? I'll bring a motion to explore it, but I want to make sure I bring the right motion.
I'm asking the county.
Okay. If that's, when it's an order, Mr. Warden, I'll make a reference to staff on this request.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Bradley. Counselor Napper, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'd just like to second that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lucie, you had your hand up before. Is that for discussion?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. No, actually, I was just going to second Mayor Bradley's motion.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Sarah, for your presentation. I do have attended Peacekeeper Park over the years. And it's quite a moving experience to go down there and just be involved and be touched by it. And I'm just wondering if the motion that's going to be looked after here today that's on the floor, if that's going to ask staff to investigate locations with the lower tiers for the local municipalities as well as the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority in regards to property or how that motion's going to be formulated? I didn't really hear a lot of the details, Warden.
That's a very good point, Counselor Arnold. If the mover would like to, I think those are great suggestions.
I'm glad Mayor Arnold raised that I'm, I'm glad Mayor Arnold raised that because it was, I didn't get a chance to get into detail, but it does need, and it needs a timeframe too, that it be referred to staff and report back within 90 days about, and I'll, I'll take from Mayor Arnold, the points he raised. Consultation with the local municipalities, private property owners that are interested and also the conservation authority. And that would be the meat of the motion. And I do want the 90 day because I think we need to put a timeframe into it.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Uh, any further discussion before we call the vote? Counselor Ronbos.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I welcome this into our county and I would recommend that if this does come into our county, that all of county council go and experience the trail or the challenges as a team building exercise.
You run a great program.
It sounds like it.
That's great for you young people, Jackie.
We do, we do offer things, we do offer corporate team building with the, the team building elements that we do have. We are geared to youth, but we certainly won't say no to adults. We've actually even had some abused women and their children come in to kind of help recreate the bonds between them that was lost during the difficulties that we were going through. My coworker, my partner and I that do the training there have a whole lot of training and mental health. I myself actually work for LCDS and I got involved because of the summer camp, but I fell in love with the place and I have now been running background with Jean for the last 19 years. And I'm now kind of on my own with the paperwork end of things, but we have a board. But again, we're looking to restructure and build on our board as well with more areas from the people that we are hoping to support throughout this. But we figured in 20 years, we had over 25,000 youth go through there.
Okay, great discussion. Uh, we'll call the motion or sorry, call the vote on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Sarah.
Very much.
And we'll be in contact. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Enjoy your day.
And the third delegation is Stephen Thompson, the CEO of SLEP and Catherine Walker, the Chair. So welcome, Stephen and Catherine.
Well, thank you, Warden and county councilors for the opportunity to provide this update. For those of you who don't know me, I am Catherine Walker. I own two businesses here in Sarnia-Lampton. Between the two companies, I employ 22 people. I'm past Chair of the Sarnia-Lampton Chamber, a Director on the SLEA Board for the past seven years, and I joined the SLEP Board in 2017. Uh, for a bit of a background, in 2016, a number of motions were passed by county council asking the board to realign itself with the priorities of the organization and skills for targeted sectors. Motions included having representation from each of the four geographic areas of the county, limiting board members to two, three-year terms, and that the Chair of the Board be from the private sector. Since that time, the board has continued working toward developing policies and formalizing annual procedures, which included a review of the business sectors, geographic composition and bylaws. As a result, the term of Chair was changed from one to two years and the board size reduced. In 2019, our then Chair, Alex Palamaca, presented the updated bylaws to county council on May 1st, 2019, and they were ratified at SLEP's AGM that same year. We now have a balanced board of seven automatic directors based on their positions in the community and seven business directors based on their skills, sector representation and geographic factors. Currently, we have seven directors from the city of Sarnia and six directors coming from across Central, North and South Lantin. Our board is comprised of very knowledgeable and experienced community and business leaders, as you can see from this list here. So it's a rather long list, so I'll give it a second. Yep, that's good. Thanks, Christine. SLEP also has two standing committees, Governance and Finance. Governance oversees bylaws and elections. Finance has oversight of the budget and annual audit. Ad-hoc committees are established on an as-needed basis. As Chair of SLEP, it has been my goal to continue to work on board governance so staff can excel at the important work of economic development. In November of 2020, the board passed a nomination and diversity policy, which at a high level outlines the nomination process and the purpose and guiding principles of the board composition. In particular, a commitment to achieving a diverse board reflective of our community, including the goal to achieve 50% women in business director positions, was passed. And then in January 2021, the board passed a code of conduct, which in part covers board member conduct, communication, support for SLEP, delegation of responsibilities, decisions, board attendance and defines the voice of SLEP. We have added a new business section to our agenda so board members have an opportunity to bring forward any new or emerging topics, share announcements or discuss at greater length issues that may impact our economic prosperity. Our AGM is held annually in June. This year will be done virtually on the 15th and we are very pleased to have booked two guest speakers for the event. And this meeting is of course open and we encourage you all to attend. So that's the, covers the governance portion. I'm going to pass the rest of the presentation over to Stephen to talk about operations.
Thank you, Catherine, Warden, members of council. Pleased to, pleased to provide a further update with additional information on, on our strategic plan and activities and operational details associated with that. In 2018, SLEP adopted a new strategic plan. The strategic plan was a committee-led process that included one-on-one consultations with key stakeholders, an online survey and a public consultation session. The strategic plan that was adopted focuses on five pillars. People, progress, perception, place and participation. The people pillar has a large focus on retaining recent graduates and workers in our region and attracting new residents. We are also leading an initiative with Lantin College and other partners to assist employers in creating apprenticeship placements and linking recent graduates with those opportunities. The progress pillar is by far the largest in terms of activities. It includes attracting businesses to locate in our area, supporting employers already located here and fostering small business and entrepreneurship. We are currently actively managing 114 potential investment deals in our pipeline, totaling over $2 billion in potential investments. Of these, three are currently forecast to make decisions before the end of the year. We are also pursuing leads representing an additional $3 billion in potential investment. Existing businesses typically represent 80 to 90% of, of any community's job growth. Therefore, supporting existing businesses is really key, especially with the challenges caused by COVID. Since the start of 2020, we have worked directly with 366 medium-sized businesses representing over 9,700 jobs. Also part of the progress pillar is our Small Business Enterprise Center that has been extremely busy providing consultations with over 600 small businesses and entrepreneurs and hosting 26 workshops and seminars, including an on-demand seminar in conjunction with the library system. On the next slide, I've included a graph showing key sectors for new investment attraction. Uh, the bars on the graph represent the, the active files that we're currently working on and the sectors that, that the businesses fall into. With information technology, bio-industrial, petrochemical, energy and manufacturing among the largest bars on that graph. Moving on to the perception pillar, the perception pillar focuses on communicating the positive image of the Sarnia-Lampton area. Recent highlights include a new digital marketing campaign, development of 14 smart Sarnia-Lampton videos that include innovative business success stories, a new series of sector marketing materials to use with potential investors and community prospectus documents to help attract entrepreneurs and residents to our area municipalities. Meanwhile, the place pillar focuses on supporting infrastructure for economic development readiness. This includes infrastructure such as the oversized load corridor, the port or the airport committee that Karen Richards from our team chairs. We are also taking a deeper dive into defining our value proposition for five key investment attraction sectors and a sector of the future. A numerical analysis is complete and consultations have taken place with over 30 key industry stakeholders. This also takes a critical look at investment factors such as workforce, taxes and infrastructure, so we can all work together in advancing the Sarnia-Lampton area. Concurrently, we are leading work to evaluate 18 key employment sites across the Sarnia-Lampton area. This leverages the industry standard certified sites template and allows for comparisons to sites in competing regions. The fifth pillar of the strategy is the participation pillar. Uh, participation and communications are truly key. Our team is active in the community across the Sarnia-Lampton area, serving on 35 committees related to economic development, whether that's Chamber, Sarnia-Lampton Industrial Alliance, Workforce Development, Committees at the College, Innovation Bridge, Local Innovation, Local Immigration Partnership, et cetera. Uh, to communicate with local stakeholders, we are active on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, Instagram. And in addition, this year, we have sent bi-weekly updates on programs and services, bi-monthly news and activity highlights and have sent over 90 grant and resource updates since the start of the pandemic. As Catherine mentioned, our AGM is coming up in a few weeks where we will have a bit more time to expand on these highlights and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Stephen and Catherine. Counselor Stark, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. This, I believe, these questions, and I have a few of them. Uh, I was one of the people that requested your presentation at the last council meeting. So you, you can appreciate the fact that I had some things that, that concerned me. Through the course of your presentation, you talked about five pillars. Uh, I noted that one of the pillars that didn't present itself, maybe this is the sixth pillar, would be, uh, what are the tangible results of your organization with respect to jobs created? That's the first question. And as a direct, uh, relationship to that question would be, uh, what, how many jobs were created during 2020 and 2021 relative to the city of Sarnia? Question number three, have you met with the Growth Development Working Group in the city of Sarnia that is currently working to present growth opportunities within the city at the expense of the city? Uh, and finally, uh, given that we have appointed a Director of Economic Development for the city of Sarnia, how do you see that person integrating with your board? Given that we have absorbed the costs of, me, we being the city of Sarnia, have absorbed the cost of appointing this particular director. You can deal with those in whatever order you like and you can respond to them either you or Catherine, whoever deemed appropriate. Thank you very much.
So Stephen, if I may, I, I will end, Warden, through you. I will respond to the economic development position and, and our board. Uh, we are a governance board, so operations is handled at Stephen's level. And I, I do know that he works very closely with the Economic Development Officer at the city of Sarnia. So, um, we, we would view that as an operations role as opposed to the governance role.
Thank you for, thank you for that. Moving on to, to add to that, certainly had, had many, many scheduled Zoom meetings with, with Kelly Provost, as well as Monica. And in fact, of its only dialogues that I no longer, no longer need to look up her cell phone number. It's, uh, is committed to, committed to memory. Moving on to the other, the other parts of the question, uh, the, the Growth Development Working Group. And also for that matter, the, the waterfront, waterfront strategy. Uh, we've, we've indicated a very strong interest in, in participating in both and are, are desperately, desperately seeking more information about, uh, some of the, some of the calculations, some of the research and also providing insights through, uh, through the Director of Economic Development with respect to the Growth Development, uh, Growth Development Working Group. And that also ties, uh, ties directly into the analysis work that we, that we mentioned in our February presentation to, to this council, um, as well as was mentioned in, in this presentation with the analysis work that we're doing of 18 key employment sites across the, across the Sarnia-Lampton area. Uh, that, that certainly includes many of the ones that, uh, many of the larger ones that happen to be part of the, the Sarnia, uh, Growth, Growth Development, uh, a study that, that was on, on the Sarnia Council Agenda on, on Monday. So very interested in, in continuing to support that and would be very much so desirous of a more direct, a more direct role with that working group, as well as, as I mentioned, with the, uh, with the, the waterfront strategy working group. We've already expressed that, that interest to, uh, to city economic development, but understand it, it might not be possible to have a, a more direct role. But if it is, uh, we're definitely interested, which is why we've already, already made that, made that, that ask, made that suggestion. Uh, in terms of, in terms of job creation and in terms of, of results, the, uh, and I understand that's, that's been a question that, that has come up at County Council, both, both February of this year as well as February of the, of the prior year. We reached, uh, we reached our, our, our staff complement. We were able to start implementing the strategic plan, uh, exactly one year before the, the pandemic set in. And what, what we typically find, and over my, my 20 years of, of experience in investment attraction and, and economic development, both locally, regionally and, and internationally for that matter, the sales cycle on most of, uh, most of the, the investment attraction files that we work on can be three, four or five years. Uh, one, one company that, um, that just, just, uh, reappeared in our active file list is a company that, that we did site tours with five years ago. Uh, the trailer manufacturer that moved to, moved to Sarnia, opened up in the fall. That was the result of, of three years of, of work. Um, an investment deal that, that led to an existing facility remaining open and attracting new investment was the result of also over three years of, uh, three years of work. Uh, we do have some notable success stories and primarily those, those two in terms of, of trailer manufacturer, as well as a, a chemical manufacturer that we were able to help find a, a new buyer to, to keep active. And we, um, as noted in the presentation, have a number of, of companies that, uh, that are in our pipeline, including three that, that could make very sizable, uh, decisions before the, before the end of, of this year.
As a follow-up, if I could, um, I appreciate your explanation and I've been in sales all my life. So I understand the, the horizon times that it takes to bring something to fruition. But in, in that context, there are rolling numbers. Three years ago, we should be seeing some results from what happened three years ago if we followed your analogy. So my question was, what specifically, what specific number of jobs were created in 2020 and 2021? We are becoming very much in tune to positive results. We want to hear positive results. And yes, your explanation of time horizons is, is reasonable, but that doesn't explain what was happening three and five years ago. but that doesn't explain what was happening three and five years ago and seeing the fruition of those efforts. So if you could comment on the specific number of jobs. Thank you.
In terms of specific number of jobs, the numbers have gone up, the numbers have gone down. Companies that we have worked with to come here have restructured, have repositioned as part of the pandemic. Another company that we referenced earlier in this presentation is now looking at adding a second shift, which would effectively almost double its workforce. I think in terms of those two larger announcements, we're certainly looking at approaching four or five hundred jobs at this point with potential for further job creation, further job creation moving forward. It is difficult with multinational companies, as well as with locally owned companies, to get full disclosure of financials, of job numbers, of other things, which always, not just here, but everywhere, makes it makes it difficult to report back exact numbers and to track that, which is a key reason for the Business Retention and Expansion Program, which is relatively new, to maintain that relationship with companies, to build that trust factor, to be a first line of defense and response, and to build that trust to know that we won't do something inappropriate with numbers and confidential information that they share with us.
Any, Counselor Arnold, please, and then Counselor Bird. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Bird.
It's okay. No, go ahead. I had it up. It's all right. Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor Arnold.
Thank you very much, Warden, and Counselor Bird. I just thank you very much for your presentations here today, Catherine and Stephen. And I just wondered if you folks through SLEP had a chance to share a list of long- or short-term vulnerabilities in infrastructure that the local municipalities should be addressing, either independently or collectively throughout the county? I know that's something that, you know, investment is wonderful, but we also have to be able to sustain that and to lift that up through our infrastructure. And I'm just, I know you folks work on that all the time, but I'm just wondering if that's something that is being shared on a regular basis?
Thank you for the excellent question, Warden, through you. The, we are increasingly finding that companies have bigger projects and projects that require much larger infrastructure, whether that's electricity, whether that's water, natural gas, sewer capacity. And we are finding that it's becoming increasingly difficult to accommodate the vast number of prospects that we're working with onto existing sites within the Sarnia-Lampton area. As a result of that cursory observation, if you will, it led to, it led us to focus on doing a deep dive around the eighteen key employment sites that we referenced in the presentation to really look at those infrastructure capacity potential constraints. I don't want to say issues, but in some cases there are issues, in some cases there are constraints. It's one thing to say that there's a twenty-inch pipe in the ground. If eighteen inches of the pipe is already used, there's only two inches available for someone else. So really looking at what that remaining capacity is. That work is, we're doing everything we can to expedite that work because of some of the concurrent projects that are going on, such as the growth management work that's going on in Sarnia, and hoping to have more direct information on a site-specific basis and an area-specific basis from that to work with each municipality on whether it's Lampton Shores or Petroleum or St. Clair Township or Sarnia and whatnot. So we're definitely, we're definitely concerned that there may be some infrastructure constraints and trying to get the more specific details for the benefit of advancing our economy.
Hold up, Counselor Arnold.
No, thank you, Warden. Stephen, too, we're going through a water capacity study right now through laws, and it's probably a good idea to make sure that that's fed into. I know I look at my colleagues to the east of us, and they've struggled for a number of years trying to make sure that they do have good capacity. And so far, they've managed to make it work for everyone. And even in my own municipality, I know we're looking at different needs that we have currently, commitments that we've made, and then our future development. And we want to make sure that we stay well advanced of what's needed out there. So thank you, folks, for reviewing those things.
Thank you. I
Sorry, go ahead, Stephen.
Sorry for the follow-up. I think Mayor Arnold's comments are spot-on. And with some of the greenhouse developments, we're seeing increased interest in greenhouse developments, despite some unfortunate recent news that we're also working very closely with Enos Gollanon to hopefully turn it into a happy ending. We are seeing tremendous water requirements for the greenhouse sector, tremendous electricity requirements for the greenhouse sector. And in fact, some of the electrical transmission infrastructure that's been proposed from here to Sarnia, from here to, from Sarnia to the Chatham and Windsor area is directly related to some of that development. So water is really key, as well as being able to get the water infrastructure information on a very expedited manner when we're dealing with leads that are considering multiple locations across Ontario or across North America. They need to know if there's water capacity at our site, sufficient water capacity at our sites within a matter of days to keep us on the list before they move on to somewhere else. So it's definitely a very critical piece of infrastructure.
Thank you. Counselor Bird.
Thank you, Warden. Mr. Thompson, thank you for your presentation. Just got a very quick question. I noticed on the governance slides that you have added the new business section. Could you please elaborate on that and say why you've added it in this particular scenario and what that will incorporate?
I'll respond to that as it falls under the governance component. Because our meetings are structured from a very report-generated view, there wasn't a natural opportunity for board members to highlight issues or areas of concern or announcements that were directly affecting them. And it was an opportunity to take advantage of the individuals with the expertise and their particular sector that they bring to the table, that we thought there was value in us having an opportunity to just have a ten-minute introduction to any announcements or anything that might be under the radar or emerging that warrants having a discussion at the board level for staff to further investigate. So that was really the purpose behind that, adding that to the agenda.
Well, thank you for that. Just one further point, then. Are you able at this point to give us an example of what one of the latest points or emerging scenarios were?
Yeah, we just had invited, because of the gas plant, there's a coalition to shut down all gas plants. So we added that discussion to the new business section of a meeting. And then we invited two guest speakers, as well as people whose municipality was affected directly to come and listen in to the guest speakers. Stephen, help me out. It was IEOS?
Very close. IESO, Independent Electricity System Operator, yes.
So they came to give a presentation and discuss where we're at with that coalition trying to shut down the gas plants. So we know it affects our area, so that was a perfect opportunity to have that discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Weaver.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. A great update and report on what goes on in SLEP. And while it seems that there's never enough, that SLEP is never doing enough for some, I want to give a shout out to SLEP, to what they are doing in all the communities, the jobs that they have brought to the area. It's just, I think it's a great organization. I think we get good value for our dollar in Lampton County, the representation around and what is being presented, the number of things that are going on behind the scenes. Not everyone knows that, and I'm sitting on the board for four years as past Warden. It's certainly a great organization that does a lot of good in entire of Lampton County and all areas. So I just want to, if the glass is half-full, not half-empty. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions before we wrap up? One last to help. Counselor Bradley.
My recollection of why this request was made, and I think the same thing applies to Torson Sarnia-Lampton, when Counselor Stark and others raised it, was the minutes that are coming to the county are very, very, very high level. And the reports aren't attached that are, can be disclosed. And I think, again, the same thing applies to Torson Sarnia-Lampton. If you look at their minutes later in the agenda, basically all you see is that they met and motions were passed. So I think that needs to, on the governance side, that there needs to be more disclosure so people understand what's actually happening in the minutes within the limitations of what you can disclose. And that was driving this request.
Okay. Any comments to that statement? If not, we'll move on.
Just based on the feedback, we are taking a look and making sure that what can be added to the minutes from, because the economic development in most cases is fairly confidential activity, we will certainly, you know, we've taken that back and we will make sure that the minutes reflect what we can share.
Thank you. One last chance for questions. We're going past our time here, but if there's any burning questions. If not, thank you, Catherine and Stephen, for your presentation and answering questions. And we'll move forward. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Item number eight is staff presentations, and we have Ms. Colasanti, General Manager of Social Services, will be presenting on homelessness prevention in the community. Welcome, Ms. Colasanti.
Thank you. Can I just confirm that my screen is being shared and you can see my presentation? Thank you. So good morning, everyone. As the Consolidated Service System Manager for Housing and Homelessness, the county provides funding for a wide variety of services from emergency homeless shelters to financial support for homeownership, as is noted on this housing continuum diagram. Under the Housing Services Act, the county has a requirement to develop and implement a ten-year housing and homeless plan. Council will recall that you approved the updated plan in March of last year, exactly when COVID-19 was declared a global pandemic. Staff actually had to speed up the implementation of certain parts of the plan due to the pandemic. Each year, we are required to provide a progress report to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and that report will be part of the June committee meeting. It will provide you with a more detailed on each program and services provided by the county than this presentation will today. The updated vision was developed by the County of Lampton's Housing and Homeless Advisory Committee. This committee was developed in 2019 and is made up of twenty-five agencies that provide services to those who are homeless or at risk of being homeless. The committee ensures that a coordinated approach is taken to implement the plan, whose vision is every person has an affordable, suitable, and adequate home. The plan has four main goals. I'm not going to go through the goals. They're here. But goal number four of ending homelessness is a very ambitious goal. It is a goal I believe we can achieve. However, all of the three goals leading to that must be implemented first. And each of the goals has several objectives, which we'll be reporting on in our July report. So this slide demonstrates the current landscape, what we're dealing with today, the effects that COVID-19 has had on the homeless population in our community. Generally, during the winter months, the emergency shelter system would house approximately sixty individuals and families. And this includes the Good Shepherd's Lodge, the Haven, overflow shelter program with motels, and River City Vineyard. During COVID-19, there were as many as two-hundred-and-eighty-five individuals staying within the shelter system some nights, and now that number's approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-seven individuals. Of those individuals, we have worked with just over one-thousand-and-twenty-one unique individuals who have needed to access the homeless prevention system since the start of the pandemic. That means that seven-hundred-and-ninety-six individuals utilized emergency housing services, meaning they stayed at least one night in an emergency shelter. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five additional individuals were successfully diverted from entering the system. This is very important to note, because in most cases, individuals enter the homeless system either through a referral to the end of the Good Shepherd or they apply for financial assistance through the Ontario Works Program. While these two distinct programs have always operated in partnership, we were able to streamline this intake system into a single point of entry with a common intake and common training on diversion, which meant those two-hundred-and-twenty-five individuals never entered the shelter system at all. Four-hundred-and-twenty-eight individuals have exited the system with some intervention and assistance from their shelter worker, a caseworker, a community support worker, or one of our numerous community partners that have been assisting us. Hundred-and-thirty-one additional individuals progressed into more permanent housing through intensive case management. Most of the programs under this category are new and have been implemented since the pandemic started. So why is there such an increase in the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in our community? It's not just from the pandemic. The average market rent for a one-bedroom house in Sarnia-Lampton is twelve-hundred dollars a month. Someone who's in receipt of Ontario Works receives three-hundred-and-ninety dollars a month for rent. That's a pretty big disparity. Even if they use their total check amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, they wouldn't have enough money to pay the basic rent, so they simply cannot afford to rent an apartment in our community. The situation is not much better for a disabled individual or family in receipt of the Ontario Disability Support Payment. This is one of the main reasons there's been such an increase in our numbers, and this started a year or two years prior to COVID-19. The social assistance rates have not increased in over three years despite a huge increase in housing costs during the same period. Some of the programs that are available to assist individuals despite their shelter amount to move from the emergency shelter into the homeless program were implemented by the Homeless Prevention Team. First one is the Lampton County Rental Assistance Program. This program provides a monthly rent supplement. It's paid directly to the landlord to be able to pay full market rent. For many individuals, the lack of income is really the only barrier to housing, and this program has been very successful. At the same time, the province introduced the Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit, which is a similar program. It allows individuals who qualify to receive a portable housing benefit. This benefit can be used anywhere in Lampton County, and it's a rent supplement, and it can be used not just within the county community housing buildings. This benefit is offered to those on the rent geared-to-income waitlist to assist in reducing the waitlist, and we offered a certain number to those living in the shelter system to assist them in exiting the system. But again, it's important to note that even with the additional rent supplement program to us, availability of units is a huge barrier. There's not only a lack of affordable housing options within the city of Sarnia and the county, but there's a lack of housing stock in general. If this is not addressed, the homeless population will continue to grow. Many of the individuals living in the shelter system were actually working at the start of COVID, but they still weren't able to find housing due to the lack of stock and the affordability. The county increased the number of community support workers during COVID as well to provide intensive case management to this population. An outreach team was developed in partnership with Lampton Public Health. Due to the multiple health issues this group can be dealing with, including mental health and addiction, they often require a cross-sectorial approach to helping them find housing. This includes social workers, EMS, and nurses. The Canadian Mental Health Association Sarnia-Lampton branch works very closely with the outreach team and enhanced their existing housing programs as well to provide additional supports as well as additional rent supplements to house some of these individuals. This slide demonstrates what our homeless prevention team looks like right now. We're trying to, it's a work in progress, so trying to show you what it sort of looks like. Council recently approved the hiring of an additional Ontario Works supervisor with a focus on homeless prevention. And as I noted earlier, much of this work is outlined in our ten-year plan. However, we had to implement the plan without having the system fully designed because of the impacts of COVID-19. So this illustrates how the entire division So this illustrates how the entire division really has been working together on the homeless prevention issue since the pandemic started. The circle in the middle demonstrates the staff that have always worked with this population to find housing or to ensure they remain housed, but they are now providing a more focused approach on this population. Our Circles program was able to maintain, to help assistance, to help individuals remain housed that were in that program, and it was an invaluable program. As were the Ontario Works caseworkers and the social housing community support workers. The homeless prevention team is led by the homeless prevention and social planning supervisor, who was hired in 2020 with support from the Federal Reaching Home program. Council will recall that the County of Lampton was one of only six new communities across Canada to receive this designation. The homeless system coordinator, a hyphus coordinator, were also hired to support this system with funding from Reaching Home. This will introduce an assessment tool for prioritizing individuals and matching them to available programs. We created a landlord engagement position as well to develop relationships with local landlords. Given the challenges that are presented by the housing shortage, we thought this was really important, and this role has proven to be very successful despite the limited market. Additionally, three new community support workers were hired to specifically work with individuals living within the shelter system. One of these positions also works with the Indigenous population. The final bubble, which has the new Ontario Works homeless prevention supervisor, shows how the Ontario Works team is getting integrated into the entire team. This team includes a crisis worker who provides intake into the shelter system, as well as three new community support workers who work with high acuity clients in receipt of Ontario Works. And we also have a specialized mental health worker who works directly with Canadian Mental Health Association and individuals who have not yet been diagnosed with a mental health condition. So they'll work closely with them on retaining housing. We don't do this alone. The county also, the county also provides funding to many community partners to assist. As I mentioned, we have over 200 individuals still living within the shelter system and 559 that received assistance from either the county team or one of our amazing community partners, or in many cases, both. Because as I noted earlier, it takes a multi-sector approach to assist individuals to become successfully housed. These are the community partners that receive funding from the county for programming. It's important to note, though, there are other partners that work with this population that we do not fund, and we certainly appreciate the work they do. With the additional COVID funding that we've been able, that we received, we were able to cover the direct cost of the emergency shelter operated through the end of the Good Shepherd as well as provide funding for their staff. And I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment here to thank Miles Vanny and his team for the work they have done throughout the pandemic to house all of these individuals. They have been incredible and worked tirelessly for the past 15 months, and they continue to do that work. The Inn is actually presently recruiting for a specialized 2SLGBTQ+ housing stabilization worker. Earlier this year, funding was provided to the Sarnia Lampton Native Friendship Centre to hire an Indigenous housing worker. Both of these positions will work closely with the Lampton County team, and both were identified as gaps in our plan by the community, so we've reached out to the community to help us fill those gaps. Canadian Mental Health Association works very closely with individuals with a mental health condition. They work very closely with our team, and they've been an invaluable partner as well. Recently, we were able to provide them with additional funding for a life skills support worker to work with the housing stabilization workers that were already funded by the county. Rebound works very closely with us, and they continue to provide housing support services for the homeless youth and support services for those living at Ohana's Landing, which is our supportive housing for youth within the county. Early on during the pandemic, staff from Rebound actually assisted us to staff the overflow shelter, and we would have really had challenges with the staffing if they didn't step forward. The North Community Health Centre provides outreach services to the overflow motel locations throughout the county as well as Lampton Public Health. We required both agencies to assist us with outreach, given the growing population and the need to ensure the health and safety of those living within the system. We really hope to build on those outreach services over the next year, and we hope to include community policing as well. So we think that's a really important piece that we need to, to build into our housing continuum to work with those experiencing homelessness. This slide just demonstrates the annual housing prevent, homelessness prevention funding that we receive each year. As you can see, the county receives almost $4 million in homeless prevention from the federal and provincial government. It adds an additional $337,000 in levy dollars as well. I should note, this does not include the $4 million that council puts up for capital each year for our housing programs as well as provincial housing funding that we receive. This is strictly the dollars for homeless prevention. Also, we received significant funding during COVID-19, just over $6 million from the province, which we anticipate will be spent by October of this year, as well as some federal Reaching Home dollars. Without these dollars, we would not have been able to maintain the overflow and isolation shelter as long as we have. This is a snapshot of where the provincial funding was spent. As you can see, the majority of our funding was spent on emergency shelter solutions, so operating the overflow shelter. It's important that we develop the prevention programs that we're spending less on because the emergency shelter costs are just not sustainable. We know from history that it's just much cheaper to house individuals through affordable housing or rent subs or transitional housing than to operate a shelter. You'll note, we used very little of the funding for administration. We, only early in COVID, we used the dollars to update our technology to allow staff to work from home, to allow for physical distancing, as well as to allow some computers into the shelter system. We didn't have that in the past. There was one small capital project we received funding for, and this was to add a staff washroom at the Haven to allow the youth shelter to reopen with the new COVID guidelines around physical distancing. So what are our next steps? Because we still have a large population living within shelter. So we're hoping to continue to provide the support services to those living within the shelter to ensure they, they too have access to safe, affordable housing. We're going to work towards closing the overflow shelters. Ideally, we'd like to return to pre-COVID numbers. We want to continue our efforts to divert households away from emergency housing and progress households into more permanent housing. We want to ensure the province continues to provide funding until the number of individuals in our shelter system does return to pre-COVID levels. As I noted, our funding will, will end in October of this year. And so we are working with the province to, to ensure we get additional dollars. In June, we're going to be completing an enumeration of the homeless population. We think we have a good handle on what the numbers are, but we do want to do an enumeration to ensure that we've captured all of those individuals who may be living rough within our community and are not in the shelter system presently. We also hope to develop a by-name list by August of 2021. A by-name list really just provides real-time data of our homeless population. We've not had that in the past, so at any given time, we'll know how many individuals may be experiencing homelessness, and it's actually now a legislated requirement. We have some long-term goals as well, which are very important, that we, that we work towards those long-term goals. Again, we won't be able to eradicate homelessness in our community. We're hoping to work with all of you to increase some affordable housing opportunities, perhaps in other communities. We'd like to complete the Maswell Park Place Build in Sarnia. That is the addition of 24 new affordable housing units, and the county received $1.3 million in provincial and federal funding towards this project. We, we're going to continue to work with both the federal and provincial governments to get additional funding because we know we need many more supportive and affordable housing units within our community in order to reach our goals. And finally, we're going to continue to implement the goals and objectives that we've outlined and were approved by council in our 10-year housing and homeless plan. So thank you. That was a very high-level overview of what the current situation looks like and what our goals are for the coming months and years.
Thank you for that, Ms. Colasanti. Is there any questions from council? Councillor Bradley, please.
Thank you. That was the type of presentation that I think was very helpful for county council and also for the community. I think they need to understand the, the dynamics, the funding, and the outreach that's going on. I did talk to Miles Vanny on Friday, and the big concern is that if the provincial government doesn't step up and renew funding come September, this fall, we have a real crisis on our hands. Is that not the case?
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Councillor Bradley. That could be the case. Again, we're, we're working very closely with all of these individuals. We have increased our number of community support workers who can provide intensive case management. So, and we are seeing those numbers start to come down, and at the same time with our very diligent diversion process, we're taking less people into shelter and trying to keep them housed. So I'm really hoping that we're able to reduce those numbers significantly by September. But you're right, we won't have the numbers back to pre-COVID to just get within the lodge. So we will need to be looking for alternative situations and solutions for these individuals. We may have to divert some of our base funding into the shelter and not do other programs, which really would be disappointing to the community, I think, because without those prevention programs, the numbers will start to grow again.
Well, thank you. That's, that's the concern, and it's not really your role, but I'd like to ask county councils to ask for an extension of that funding. And you've made it clear that there is a decline. If you were looking for an extension from the province to keep that money flowing, would you be looking six months, a year? Being realistic in, in the times that we're in.
Being realistic, I would like to start my asking for funding to go to the end of 2022.
Okay. Mr. Warden, I will bring a motion to that effect after this discussion's over.
Okay, thank you. Councillor White, and then Councillor Bird.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. My, my comments fall basically in line with Councillor Bradley's. I have a tremendous amount of, of fear that as the economic recovery plan starts to kick in from the province and even from the federal government, that the dollars just will dry up coming in our directions, but that's certainly not going to help us mitigate our, the issues that we're seeing in the ever-increasing costs of, of rent and our, our limited supply of housing stock. Particularly concerning to me is how this affects people on social assistance, ODSP. And as you indicated, there haven't been increases in those funds for recipients for a number of years now. And for years, I hear that it ends up having to be the province or the federal government that kicks in. But, you know, the reality is we're dealing with these issues at the ground level right here as a municipality and in our lower tiers through other social issues that start to arise due to homelessness and difficulty. My question is, really, if you had a magic wand and you had a, a significant ask of county council that we could start to work towards over the next few years beyond what the province may or may not commit to us, what, what would that magic wand provide for you? What would that ask be for us?
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Councillor White. I, I think there are three major issues that affect this, the homeless population right now, and I think it is the social assistance rates have not been increased for some time. That, that would be one issue. The other, again, is the lack of affordable housing units and the lack of housing stock. And the final issue is, while we have some very good supports for those suffering from mental health conditions and addictions, we don't have enough supports. We need more. And I know we hear that a lot, you know, we need more supports, but at this time, we have very little transitional housing for someone with a mental health condition, and we really do need more supports in the community for that. So those are the top three issues that I think face our community and all communities across Ontario. We're not alone in this.
Thank you. Councillor Bird, and then Deputy Warden Hadd. You're on mute, Councillor Bird.
Sorry about that. Through the chair to the battery. Thank you very much for the presentation. And I know we did have a discussion about this once before, but going back to the rents that are going up astronomically now, as we've already discussed, but I wanted to talk about this publicly. People who are already in an apartment, under the Rent Act of 2020, I think it was just over 2% was the tabled increase, and it couldn't exceed that. But for people whose circumstances change and they have to move to a different-sized apartment for whatever reason, they are considered, even if it's in the same apartment block, it's considered a new tenant. And as such, there is no limit to what they can be charged. And they're being charged astronomical rates, and this, I see, is a really, really big problem because people who have already, they're receiving some kind of funding, and they're already living and managing, and all of a sudden, they're faced with these extreme increases. So I think you're going to have numbers added to the homelessness unless there's something that maybe you and your provincial partners can, can come to some agreement or organize something whereby if there's a limit to the, under the Rent Act, to what you pay if you stay in your apartment, why can't there be a limit of a different sort? But, you know, if you have to move apartment due to your family growing or your circumstances changing, whatever it is. So that's the first part. And the other thing I wanted to ask you, because I've had several calls, for those that are really unfortunate and, and are suffering and they have nowhere to live at all, I'm being asked if the community members can use their tents and through the warmer months, camp out in the community parks.
Through, through you, Warden Marriott, to Councillor Bird. The first part of your question, the rent is controlled by the Landlord Tennessee Act, which is a provincial body, so we're not really, I can't really speak to that. Certainly, if council wants to, you know, lobby the provincial government to make changes there, I think that's the prerogative, but again, I can't really speak to that. If an individual moves within community housing that's owned by the County of Lampton, we do have a rent scale. It, it depends on the number of individuals in your family. And it might go up slightly, but it, it wouldn't have these concerns. So if someone's living within Lampton's community housing, that's not going to be an issue for them. But you're right, anyone else in market rented absolutely would be. As for the second part of your question, I think that would be up to each community, and I can't really speak to that.
Okay, because, you know, there's, there's more than a couple of people have asked about that particular point, and they wanted me to bring that question forward, so. And there are, as you've said before, there are extremes. There are the people that are in different kinds of accommodation right now, from hotels, motels, apartments. But then there are the unfortunate people who have no accommodation, and they're living really rough. So they're looking for action sort of right away. They're looking for what is the answer? Would they, if they've got a tent, if they own a tent, and they can just go to a local park, they want to know if they can do that and at least get them through until a fall. So I think it's something that we all need to consider because there are those people that fall into that category, unfortunately. Maybe that's something each municipality needs to bring up at their next council meeting.
I believe so, Councillor Bird. That would be, as Ms. Colasanti said, that would be up to the individual municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Deputy Warden Hadd.
Thank you, and thank you again, Ms. Colasanti, for your presentation. You and I have chatted in the past about the impact on some municipalities related to the people in the hotels. I'm not, I'm not getting into that right now. It's just so that people are aware that there is an impact on municipal resources related to fire and police. But my question goes back to what you're talking about. I know that we have to find places to be able to move people out of the hotels. So when you talk about the new build in Sarnia, and it's 24 units, 24 units could take, you know, X number of people depending on the size. How does that get allocated? Like, does anyone, any of these people that are housed in these temporary facilities, do they get an access? Is there a waiting list? I'm just wondering how it works to house it, to people, for people to go into this new housing in Sarnia.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Councillor Hadd. At this time, we have our social housing waitlist, and we would encourage individuals who are interested to put their name onto the waitlist and express that, if that's what they want to do. We are taking a look at being able to prioritize individuals who are living in a shelter on different programs. So we really look at each individual, and if it's appropriate for them to go on the social housing waitlist, that's what we'll do. But there are other programs, so we have to look at it, again, as a whole continuum and all of the programs and each individual. But specifically to your question, anyone interested in moving into those should be putting their name onto the waitlist at this time. Thank you.
Councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I just, I didn't notice in the presentation that was given to us any discussion around the tiny, tiny home. any discussion around the tiny, tiny home impacts. I know that we've sent that off to staff for a report. And I know those little, the homes are anywhere from 200 to 400 square feet. So at that size, single people, myself included, fit into that category very easily. I'm just wondering, I know they'd be a lot faster to move out into the community, if that's something that through this presentation, that would be incorporated in through the homelessness initiative, trying to move people back into community and into decent housing, if we can get the OP changed.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor Arnold. Absolutely, it's something we would consider. Again, I think it's going to depend on each community's official plan. And, you know, if the community's interested in bringing them in, we're happy to work in partnership with Habitat or private sector. So it's absolutely on our radar. We'll take some funding and again, some changes perhaps to official plans. But happy to work on those types of innovative projects.
Counselor Arnold, follow up.
Thank you, Warden. Yes, I think it starts with the county official plan, because it's right now the one that's holding the rest of us back, I believe. But I could be wrong with that, Warden. But something that I need to follow up and get more information.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Rumbos.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the private sector. And are we seeing more take up of the private sector? I was shocked when I saw the rents and how much they are charging now. Are, is the private sector starting to build? I mean, there is money to be made right now in building new units. Are we seeing any private sectors wanting to build at this point?
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor Rumbos. I believe there is building happening in many communities, including the city of Sarnia. Right now, I'm not aware of any affordable builds happening outside of the county build at Nessel Park Place.
Just a follow up to that. I know there is a building in our municipality, in our, in our town of Watford, that they are renovating it currently and making it into one and two bedroom apartments. So hopefully, that will take a little bit of the pressure off. But I think I'd love to see more of that, where people can actually afford. Because this is, those rents just blew my mind. I couldn't believe when I saw the, what people are charging.
Any further questions before we move to Counselor Bradley's motion that he has? Seeing none, go ahead, Counselor Bradley.
Of course, I don't have this prepared. But it's along the lines of that we thank the province for the Social Service Relief Fund and the funding that we received during COVID to deal with the homeless and all the other issues that come from that issue. And that we ask it to be extended through to the end of 2022, so that we can make a proper exit, a humane exit for those people in need, instead of abruptly ending the program.
Okay, Counselor White, do you second that?
And I'm open to changes, because it's off the top of my head.
Yeah. Mr. Tifo says he has it. If there's any, we can.
He's got the spirit of it.
Yeah, he's got the spirit of it. So any, any questions before we call a vote on this? All those in favor? All, Counselor Stark, do you have a question?
I think for, for the validity of this motion, we should ask for a recorded vote so that we can hopefully show a unanimous vote.
Okay. Mr. Tifo is ready for that. He'll call the vote.
All right, so motion on the table. See what the vote requested by Counselor Stark, that we have a recorded vote, and we will start with Deputy Warden Henn.
Sorry, would you mind just reading the motion one more time? I don't want to make a mistake.
Yes, that the provincial funding, provincial funding for community homelessness prevention initiative be extended through 2022, that the individuals suffering from homelessness are promptly transitioned humanely to, to housing.
Thank you. My vote is yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Leuschle.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Miller.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Navarro.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Rumbos.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Stark.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Bean.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Weaver.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel White.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Arnold.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Bird.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Bushi. Counsel Bushi? You're on mute.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Bradley.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Brode.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Cook.
Yes.
That's a yes, Counsel Ferguson.
Yes.
That's a yes, and of course, Warden Marriott.
Yes.
That's a yes. It passes unanimously.
Counsel Stark, you have a question?
Yes, I would like to suggest, and if it needs to be in a motion, I'll do that, that this topic be brought forward through AMO, specifically through the Warden and Deputy Warden during the ministerial meetings, that this topic be dealt with by the respective ministers appropriate.
So that's a motion, Counsel Stark?
I don't know if it needs to be. I presume it would happen anyway. But I want to make sure that it's on the docket.
Mr. Tifo says it will happen without a motion. Did I see another hand up? Counsel Navarro, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. So seeing nothing else on, on this, we can move to item nine, minutes of, of May the 5th. We have a motion to receive those minutes, please. Counsel Brode, seconded by Counsel White. All those in favor. Let's carry. There are no correspondence. Under section 10 and number 11, information reports, we have one report under Infrastructure and Development Services Division regarding woodlands conservation bylaw and county managed lands. So are any questions to this report? Counsel Bradley.
Just what is going to happen to this information?
Who do we have to speak to? There we are. Mr. Cole, please.
Through you, Warden Marriott, to Counselor Bradley. Right now, the direction from committee was to receive and file. But our intent would be to forward the report or such information contained within the report back to the presenter of that information, the original information, Mr. Kelt.
Okay, because what he's asking for is a lot different than receive and file. And I think it's a concern of all of us about the lack of control over wooded lands throughout Lampton County. And, you know, the request, the request is for a bylaw that would deal with 0.5 acres should be regulated. I don't know if that's the number or not. But I do think we need to strengthen our wood bylaw, lot bylaws as it applies to County Council.
Okay. Counsel Stark.
I think to accommodate a move towards a bylaw, we need a, and I'll move, a report from county staff relative to woodlots be presented in order to facilitate better protection.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Or seconded by Counsel Bradley? Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
On the original report, you can receive and file.
Oh, okay. So yeah, we would need also need a motion on the original report, receive and file. Motion by Counsel Bean, seconded by Counsel Weaver. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item 12, items not requiring motion is tours in Sarnia-Lampton, four minutes. Counsel Stark?
Yes, I have comments and questions that I don't know if, if anybody is in a position to be able to answer them, whether or not Mr. Parent is available. At any rate, I'd like to share with County Council the fact that, and I preface this by saying that 2020 statistics have been excluded because of the uniqueness of the COVID environment for 2020. However, in 2017, the city of Sarnia's contribution towards the TSL budget was $721,499, then supplemented by $3,241 of advertising allocations on top of that. In 2018, $755,673, supplemented again by advertising of $3,048. 2019, $748,574, and add to that, $13,480. The reason I bring that up is on page 83, there is a comment, actually a motion that has been presented that calls for Mr. Parent to deal with Mr. Tifo as it relates to seeking guidance as to the, as to the negotiations with the city of Sarnia relative to the MAT tax. My question, my questions that come out of that are, first of all, the city of Sarnia does have options in terms of where it directs its MAT tax. It can go through the Sarnia-Lampton Hotel Association. It can go through the Sarnia-Lampton Chamber of Commerce. And in that, we could ensure that the MAT tax that is derived from the city of Sarnia can be reinvested in the city of Sarnia facilities. My questions, and again, I don't know who can answer these, but will we be funding, will the TSL be funding any portion of the city's waterfront master plan, and how much? Did TSL lay off any staff members during calendar year 2020 relative to the pandemic, which obviously would reduce its expenses? And again, if you were to engage Mr. Tifo as legal counsel regarding your dispute with the city of Sarnia relative to the MAT tax, will TSL be reimbursing the city of Sarnia for their portion of Mr. Tifo's wages? And what guarantee does the city of Sarnia have that 100% of the MAT tax collected in the city of Sarnia will be directed to facilities in the city of Sarnia? Anybody that can provide those answers would be appreciated, whether it be now or into sometime by way of a written response would be appreciated.
I would say due in the aspects of time, and I don't think the appropriate people are on board here, but correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to take your second advice and have a written report back. Is that okay from us?
It is indeed. And the sooner the better. Thank you.
Okay, no pressure there at all. Any other comments? Where are we here?
So number 12, items not requiring motion.
Yes.
Just receive and file.
So a motion to receive and file, what we had on here, Counsel Cook and Counsel Rumbos, all in favor. Let's carry. And moving to 13, reports requiring motion, Corporate Services Division, report dated June 2nd regarding memorandum of understanding at Lampton College. Counsel Bushi.
Hi, Bill Wolf.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Counsel White. Any discussion on that? All in favor. Let's carry. Move to 14, committee minutes. And I'd call on Counsel Rumbos, please.
Yes, I move that, or I present the committee AM minutes from May 19th for council's consideration. My dog seconds that. Sorry.
Thank you. Number one is correspondence from member municipalities. Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I believe correspondence from member municipalities came from St. Clair Township. And under item number, motion number two, it says the correspondence be received and filed. I'd like to have a recorded vote on that one, please.
Okay. I'll ask Mr. Tifo to call that vote.
All right. So it's requested by Counsel Arnold that.
Sorry, we have two questions, Counsel Bradley and Counsel Leuschle.
Let's ask her, what are we voting on?
I'd like to have that motion.
So, so the, we're voting on the resolution that came from St. Clair on the, the lights on highways, at the intersection of Highway 40 and Vent Path Line. A request, I guess. Correct, Counsel Arnold?
Yes, the committee just received and filed it. We were hoping for some action. If there's no action, that's fine. But I'd like it recorded of who voted in favor and who didn't.
Okay. Counsel Bradley.
I think it's important, though, the whole group needs to know, if I recall that discussion, staff were saying that they wouldn't support it. And it seemed to me a reasonable thing for us to support to the province. So I just want to be clear on what we're voting on, because I'm supportive of what you're asking for and your township is asking for, Mayor Arnold. So if the receive and file is defeated, then I presume Mayor Arnold can bring a motion to have moved this forward.
Okay. So that's what you're looking for, Counsel Arnold, to defeat this and bring back your other motion?
Sure. That'd be super.
Okay, Mr. Tifo, please.
Yes, again, the motion on the table, recorded vote required, or requested by Counsel Arnold. And we will start with Counsel Brode.
You're on mute, Counsel Brode. I couldn't read your lips.
I can read the middle of the vote.
Yeah, just to confirm.
I brought something. Thanks.
Just to confirm, if you vote in favor, so if you vote yes, you're voting for the minutes thing as is, which is that the subject matter be simply processed on a received and filed basis. Counsel Brode?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counsel Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Counsel, or Deputy Warden Henn?
I'm sorry. I'm, I tried to ask the question at the beginning. I'm confused on what's happening. I thought that we had looked at that from Mr. Cole, and it was going to be studied further. Can someone help me with that previous work? Wasn't it taken away to be part of a study? I just, I'm sorry, but I'm.
It was, it was voted on to receive and file at county, at the committee level. And Mayor Arnold would like to see it moved forward. So he would like to see the receive and file from committee rejected.
Okay. So no is I'm not receiving and filing?
Correct.
Thank you. No.
I have a no. Counsel Leuschle?
Yes.
I have a yes, or Counsel Miller?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Navarro?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Rumbos?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Stark?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Bean?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counsel Weaver?
Yes.
I have a yes. Counsel White?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Arnold?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Bird?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Bushi?
No.
I have a no. Counsel Bradley?
No.
I have a no. Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no. So that motion defeats the motion of Committee AM. So Committee AM's motion has been defeated.
Counsel Arnold.
Warden Marriott, would you like me to introduce a motion now or other, other business?
Let's, let's go with other business. Is that right?
Michael, do it now.
Okay, no, we'll do it now, Counsel Arnold. Okay, no, we'll do it now, Council Arnold, that while we're fresh on our minds.
Thank you, Warden. My motion would be that Lampton County staff contact the MTO to establish options on how to proceed with illumination of this intersection, and that would include costing and all the rest.
Do I have a second here? Council Miller? Further discussion? Council Cook?
Would this be, this report would be referred to 2021 or 2022 budget, or when would the funding application be brought back?
I believe it's just a motion to present to the province at this point, correct, Council Arnold?
Yes, and just to establish some options so we can look at it moving forward. This isn't an end-all of end-all, this is to see what the province says, to see if we can start moving it forward, and then deciding on funding after, how that's going to work.
So I was thinking there would be no need for budget. Council Rumbouts, you have a question?
Yes, can we please hear from county staff on this, as we did at the committee level?
Mr. Cole, are you available?
Yes, through you, Warden Marriott, to Council Rumbouts. So the county has previously been in touch with the Ministry of Transportation to ask them to review their warrants for illumination at this intersection. The response that we received and was forwarded to St. Clair Township was that it does not meet their current warrants, and they're not willing to proceed with illumination at that intersection from the provincial level. This intersection is controlled by the province. The county has looked at its own warrant system for illumination, and it does not meet the warrants for when we would decide to install illumination for our own county roads. So in this case, we had planned to respond back to St. Clair Township with that information.
Council Stark?
Yes, I believe through you, Warden, to council, I believe this is another example of what should be taking, taken up at the AMO conference with direct representation to the minister and MTO in general, and I specifically cite the example of widening Highway 40. That was never on the radar of the, of the province to widen that facility until such time as the City of Sarnia made multiple representations through AMO, and quite frankly, was successful in changing the direction that had previously been the case. This is an example of where political interaction with the province can be helpful, and quite frankly, this should be done. This is what we're here for. We're here to correct things that we feel are inappropriate and underrepresented. So I will wholeheartedly support this, this motion. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Okay, yeah.
No. Okay, so all in favor, or all in favor? That is carried. Moving on to AM Committee Minutes, number two is information reports. Sorry, two, three, four, and five, six, reports requiring a motion is seven. Public health is number eight. Number nine is information reports. Number 10 is cultural services. Information reports is 11, 12, 13, and reports requiring a motion is 14, 15, and 16. And I'll call on Council Rumbouts, please.
Devin?
Hi.
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead, Council Bean.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about number 14. I understand the importance of recognizing our Aboriginal partners, but I don't think that this should be done at county level. I think if every, every council on their own wants to have this read at their, at their council meetings, I think that's where it should be done, and I think status quo should be the way it is at the county council. You know, we have our silent reflection, and I think, I think that's the way it should remain, so I would, I think we should have a vote on this, and maybe I'm going to be outvoted, but I think that's the way it should, should remain, is status quo is the way we have it right now.
Council Bradley.
There's only, the one, the one main reason it's coming to county council, and I'll ask Mr. Van Horn to correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that Lampton County government is the only government at the municipal level that covers the territories, all the territories. In Sarnia, we're side by side with the Almshnom, Lampton Shores has its own relationship with Kellam and Stony Point, but there's only one level of government at this local level that covers all and including touches with Opal Island, the sovereign territory. So that's why this is coming here, because the others can reflect, as we are in Sarnia, on our own First Nations relationship, but we cannot cover the entire relationship throughout Lampton County, and that's why it's at this level.
So, Mr. Van Horn, did you want to comment, or Council Bean, did you want to pursue your motion?
Well, I, actually, I still realize that, that we do recognize them, and I think we've recognized them in the past as we go along, but I don't, I don't think we actually need to do this every meeting that we have, and I, and I, I don't really think that every councillor should be subjected to reading it. I, myself, I, I just don't think that, and I'm fine with anybody that wants to, to have it at their own council, but I don't think we need it at the county council. That's just my thought. I'm probably going to be outvoted on this, so, anyway.
Council Bradley.
Yes, I had brought this forward, and I have to say, I take offense at the word We're talking about people that have been in this land for 11, 11,000 years, and we've been here, what, 200 or 300, so it's not them.
Well, the last thing I wanted to do was offend anybody, and I figured that's where this would end up going, so I'm just going to leave it at that. My intention was not to offend anybody at all, Mike, so I'll just...
And I will respect that, I just, it's, it's the terminology and that sensitivity to it. And I believe when I raised this, because it's Sarnia council, there was a councillor that objected to reading it, so now my job is chair to read it. But we did say during the discussion, if anyone on council, it won't be public, if they do not feel comfortable reading the, the declaration, then they can simply pass on it. I just thought it was good for everyone, because we all share with the First Nations throughout Lampton County. But if I understand correctly, Mayor Bean, you're going to withdraw the recorded vote request? Or...
I, I think it should be a recorded vote. I, I'm probably going to be the only one, but hey, I think it should be.
Okay, that's fine. For that, just giving you the background.
Okay, so request, Council Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Marriott, and I sent Warden Marriott a note the other day after I saw these minutes, that we asked for a flag from each one of our First Nations neighbors, and I think it's been done on two different or three different occasions over the last seven years, and we still haven't received one flag yet. And I know, Warden, you were going to follow up with staff and see if we could make some more inroads in with them, so, you know, it's, it's always a two-way street. And yes, I really want to be able to show respect to our First Nations neighbors, but you know, it's got to come back the other way too, and something as simple as a flag being presented to county council, I think that would go a long way to help bridge relationships and make them stronger at the county building.
Council Stark?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. A couple of points of clarification, I don't know, and maybe I missed something. Is there a second here for this motion?
We're actually voting, would be voting on the minutes.
Right on the minutes, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the, on the committee minutes, Council Stark.
Okay, as it relates to this particular motion then, and following up on Council Bradley's point, what we did at the City of Sarnia, given that there were one or more people who were not comfortable with reading the, the resolution, it reverted to the chairman being the person that would read this. In this scenario, we're talking about the warden being the person as opposed to simply skipping over individuals who uncomfortable, because obviously that identifies who did or didn't vote for this. So I just want clarification as to understanding, if there are people who are uncomfortable, that should mean that the warden is the person who will be making the declaration. Thank you.
Council Cook?
Thank you, Warden. I guess that changes the whole motion, though. Should we be voting on the two separate? Because I would agree with Council Stark, that perhaps not everybody would maybe want to be reading this, but that is part of the motion here that we'd be voting on, so if we vote down the motion, will we be defeating the whole, the whole acknowledgement, as opposed to Part A and Part B, where we would be acknowledging the acceptance of it, and perhaps making it the warden would be reading it as opposed to each individual councillor?
Okay, thank you for that. Who would like to clarify that, Mr. Tifo or Mr. Van Horn?
Council Bradley.
Oh, sorry, Council Bradley, did you want to...
Sorry, there are two separate questions.
Yeah.
And I would ask then to be a recorded vote on both questions. Deputy Mayor Cook raised an issue there, and that, and I will say again, if I had the choice to do it again at Sarnia council, I would have proceeded with the vote, and everyone, if someone doesn't want to read it, but everyone would have had a chance because there were councillors that wanted to read it and to show their support. So you can separate the questions anyhow, A and B, and we can vote on record for each vote.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? So, Council Arnold?
Thank you, Warden Marriott. The only thing that I would ask if this goes through is that somebody's going to have to teach me how to speak so that I don't, do not disrespect any of our First Nations neighbors, because I've looked at some of the territories and their pronunciation, and I'll be honest with you, my dialect sucks as an English person, and I would hate to ever insult or disrespect our First Nations neighbors. So I'm going to need help if I'm going to be the one reading.
Okay, Council Lucely, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Warden Marriott, I just think we should, yeah, we should deal with them separately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tifo, please.
Yes, I just want to confirm, if I understand correctly, council's wishes is to vote on item 14 of the Committee AM minutes, subparaphrase A and subparaphrase B separately. If you were to vote in favor of section 14, or item number 14, subparaphrase A, you would approve the policy as is, i.e., county would adopt the, the declaration, would post it in accordance with the policy. If you were to then move on to item B, two separate votes, you would then, if you pass that, it would say that, it would require that each member of council have their opportunity to read out the declaration at the beginning of the, of the meetings, and if it fails, then the policy stays in its current fashion. Is that...
Yeah, is that clear? Okay, I'll call the vote, please.
So a recorded vote on both items, if I understand correctly, that is requested or required by Council Bean, and we will, we will vote on item A, which is again, item number 14, subparaphrase A. If you vote in favor, you're voting in favor to adopt the policy as is, which then requires the land declaration to be posted in accordance with the policy and then read effectively at two separate meetings of county council by the warden, and that is at inaugural meetings and at the election of the, of the warden. So I will start the vote with Council Napper.
Yes.
I have a yes to approve the policy. Council Rumbouts?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Stark?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Bean?
No.
I have a no. Council Weaver?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Arnold?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Byrd?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Bushy?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Broad?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Cook?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Ferguson?
Yes.
I have a yes. Deputy Warden Hand?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Lucely?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Miller?
Yes.
I have a yes, and Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. That carries, that means that the policy has been adopted. Now the second vote on item B, you would be amending the policy to require members of council in rotation to read out at each meeting of county council. Requested vote, recorded vote requested by Council Bean, and we will start with Council Weaver.
Just to be clear, we're voting on the B?
We're voting on B. Just B. So right now, the, the policy or the declaration has been approved in accordance with the policy. If you vote on B, you're amending the policy to require each member of county council in rotation to read out the declaration at each meeting. The current policy requires, in terms of reading the, or the declaration, only at two meetings, the inaugural meeting by the warden, and upon the election of the warden, or, yeah, upon the election of the warden, by the warden.
My vote is no.
I have a, I have a no, Council Weaver. Council White?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Arnold?
No.
I have a no. Council Byrd?
Nah.
I have a no. Council Bushy?
Oh.
I have a no. Council Bradley?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Broad?
No.
I have a no. Council Cook?
No.
I have a no. Council Ferguson?
No.
I have a no. Deputy Warden Hand?
I think you have... Oh, sorry, yes.
I have a, I have a yes. Council Lucely?
No.
I have a no. Council Miller?
No.
I have a no. Council Napper?
No.
I have a no. Council Rumbouts?
No.
I have a no. Council Stark?
Yes.
I have a yes. Council Bean?
No.
I have a no. Warden Marriott?
Yes.
I have a yes. That portion of the amendments does not carry, it fails, so the policy will be adopted in accordance with the, the version you have in your, in your package.
Okay, I guess we go back to Council Rumbouts, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I move that Committee AM minutes from May 19th be received and filed as amended.
Do you have a second here?
Be, be approved as amended.
Oh, be approved as amended.
All right, thank you. Be approved as amended. Thank you.
Is that seconded by Council Weaver? Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Council Lucely, you have a question?
I do, thank you, Warden Marriott, just, I just wanted to clarify in my mind, the, going back to number seven, where the increase was going to 5,000 per acre, what was the amount before?
3,000.
Thank you.
All in favor of that motion again, please? Opposed, that's carried. I would ask Council White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, members of county council, I present to you the Committee PM minutes for May 19th, 2021, for your consideration.
Thank you. Number one is under long-term care, information reports. Under finance facilities, number two. Social services division, number three. No in camera, and German, number four. Council White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott, county council, I move that the Committee PM minutes of May 19th, 2021 be approved as... I move that the Committee PM minutes of May 19th, 2021 be approved as presented.
A second here for that. Counsel Cook? All those in favor? Let's carry. That brings us to number 15, items, no items taken from previous meetings. No notice of motions, unless there's new ones. And other business. I would have one item under other business if there is nothing. This will be the last meeting before Mr. Steve Panchino leaves the organization for his new role, so I just want to thank you for your service, Mr. Panchino, and hope for best luck in your new role. We know you'll do well there. So, thank you again. There's no other business? We'll move to notice of bylaws, please.
Yes, thank you. Moved by Counsel Miller, seconded by Counsel Cook, that bylaws 13 and 14 of 2021, as circulated, be taken as, and read a first and second time.
All those in favor? Let's carry.
Is moved by Counsel Cook, and seconded by Counsel Miller, that bylaws 13 and 14 of 2021, as circulated, be taken as read a third and final time.
All those in favor? Let's carry as well. That brings us to adjournment. Our next meeting is July the 7th, as a move by Counsel Broad, seconded by Counsel Weaver. All those in favor? Let's carry. Thank you very much.